Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started here. Now, we have a packed house. All right. All right. We are reconvening, and I'd like to make the following disclosure from closed session. By a 5-0 vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the cases of Abrera versus Newsom and all, and Shkrobek versus Pleasant Valley High School and all, as identified by the case numbers on the City Council meeting agenda. We will now turn over and call to order the Parking Authority of the City of Elk Grove regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 27, 2022, and it is 6:01 PM. Would the Secretary please take the roll?
Indeed, and thank you, Mayor and Chair of the Parking Authority. For our members of the participating audience, this is a procedural item that we have, so we will be getting into the regular meeting right after we go through the roll call. Before I start the roll call, I just want to make a statement that there is no additional compensation that members of the City Council receive as sitting members of the Parking Authority of the City of Elk Grove. And with that, I will start the verbal roll call, starting with our board member, or, sorry, Agency Board Member, Nguyen.
Here.
Agency Board Member Spies.
Present.
Agency Board Member Hume.
Here.
Vice Chair Suwen.
Here.
And Chair Singh Allen.
Here.
All members are present for our Parking Authority meeting, which takes us to Section Two, General Public Comment for the Parking Authority. So, we will have an opportunity later for City Council General Public Comment opportunities for those attendees in the audience.
All right. At this time, I'll open the public comment opportunity for the Parking Authority. And I don't see anyone signed up, so I will close the public comment opportunity and turn it over for an annual update on the Parking Authority.
And I'll give the floor over to our Finance Director, Matt Paulin.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, there's no activity to report for this last year.
All right. Well, that was a very nice and short presentation. I will open up the public comment opportunity regarding the no-update report. And seeing no one signed up, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and adjourn the meeting. We will adjourn the Parking Authority regular meeting at 6:03 PM. And now, we will shift over, and I will call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 27, 2022, and it is 6:03 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. The meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Saturday, July 30 at 1:00 PM, and Monday, August 1 at 6:00 PM. It is being closed captioned, and it will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at elkgrovecity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. The City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than the allotted three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, you can complete a speaker card. They are the blue cards. They can be found at the back of the room, or they're also provided by Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard. Provide those over to Brenda, and she'll be able to help you get into the queue for signing up to speak for consideration of the agenda item. Just a few other points of order and business that I wanted to bring up to our crowd is that for any of our speakers that do come forward for our speaker podium, if you notice the microphones, they are in a fixed spot. The microphones actually attenuate to speakers. There's no reason to adjust them. For any of our speakers that like to get a little bit more demonstrative with their hands, you can feel free to step a little bit back. I'll turn up the volume, and you can, we'll be able to get your audio onto the system. I'd like folks to know, and I'm just going to take a guess based on our comments that we received prior to the meeting, but most folks are probably here for Item 8.1. For individuals that are here for later items on the agenda, please note that our foyer is open, and we do have the replay that's going, the live feed of what's going on in the meeting, and the audio is available out in the foyer as well. Or if anyone needs any kind of fresh air, as we have a full house, our restroom facilities are also located. If you head back to the foyer, you'll be able to take a series of right turns, and you'll be at the restrooms, as well as water for those that need it. And we also have some additional seats, some fold-up seats, that folks can utilize when they're out in the foyer. With that, Mayor, I will turn us over towards the roll call for our City Council meeting. For the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Spies.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suwen.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
All members are present, and take us on to the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Mr. Rice, and I'll ask for our Vice Mayor. Hand over hearts. Ready to pledge?
(Inaudible) Americans, and the Republic of America, the foundation of our God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of our.
We won't make choir anytime soon.[356.12][356.12](Laughter). All right. Thank you. At this moment, we are going to observe a moment of silence. Thank you. And approval of the agenda. Next item, may I get a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We are on to our next item, which is our presentation and announcements. Our first up here, we have our proclamation declaring August 2022 as Diversity Awareness Month. I will call forward our Diversity and Inclusion Commissioners, if you are present, to please come to the podium, and then I will read the covenants that are in our proclamation. All right. Diversity Awareness Month, August 2022. Whereas the City and its Diversity and Inclusion Commission will celebrate Elk Grove's diversity through several events and activities during the month of August, and whereas providing information, education, and communication facilitates a better understanding and appreciation for our differences, and whereas events, forums, and exchanges in collaboration with organizations promotes peace and unity within our community, and whereas the City and its Diversity and Inclusion Commission strive to create a more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government and community in Elk Grove, and whereas the City and its Diversity and Inclusion Commission invites residents to attend the Multicultural Festival celebrating diversity on Saturday, August 27, 2022, at the Center at District 56 at 8230 Civic Center Drive. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims the month of August 2022 as Diversity Awareness Month in the City of Elk Grove, and encourages all businesses, entities, the media, and Elk Grove citizenry to participate in activities and programs during this designated month, to take the city's diversity pledge, to read the Council's proclamation declaring Elk Grove as no place for hate, and take time to appreciate the diversity that exists within the City of Elk Grove, signed this 27th day of July 2022. And we are presenting this to our Commissioners this evening. Would you all join me?
Okay.
(Inaudible).
How are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
And I'll present this here. You're right in the middle, so you get to hold it.
Yep.
So let's all tighten up here. Okay, let's do it. All stand right here. Okay. All right. Ready? Okay, ready? Just a little bit closer, and there we go. Ready, one, two, three. One more. Thank you. If you'd like to say anything, you're more than welcome.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's a surprise. Did you want to say anything? Yeah, I knew you guys were going to do it. So, on behalf of the Commission, good evening. My name is Tina Lee Vogt. I'm the Vice Chair of the Commission. With me are Michael Thomas and Jiki Dohler, and we are very happy to accept this proclamation. We really want to encourage our residents to come out. For me, it's really exciting. I've been on the Commission a little over a year, and it'll be really exciting because last year we were not able to have the Multicultural Festival due to the pandemic. And so, we really want to encourage everyone to come out and attend and join us. We'll also be available at the Good Neighbor Markets on Thursday, so if you want to stop by and check us out, and just learn more about what we do and how you can be involved in your community to continue to be a city, that is welcome to all. So, thank you so very much for your ongoing support, for not only this Commission, but just for what really makes this city great. And I think one of the things I always remember is, you really don't get harmony when everyone's singing the same note. And so, diversity really helps us have a lot of harmony and bring that to our city. So, thank you so very much.
That's beautiful. Thank you.[649.54][649.54](Applause). All right. Next up is our update on the city's efforts to honor Officer Ty Lennahan.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the City Council. My name is Carrie Monte, Management Analyst here at the City of Elk Grove. Tonight, I will be presenting on the city's efforts of honoring Officer Ty Lennahan. Police Officer Ty Lennahan, his career began in Citrus Heights as a Reserve Officer in 2012. He then moved to the Galt Police Department. He was a patrol officer, and then moved to a motor officer from 2014 to 2016. Then he came to Elk Grove as a patrol officer, and then moved to a motor officer from 2016 to 2022, and his end of watch was January 21, 2022. So, earlier this year, Councilmember Hume requested staff look into honoring Officer Lennahan by changing Laguna Palms Way into Lennahan Way. Other considerations that night were discussed, including renaming an alternate location near Bradshaw Road where Officer Lennahan frequently patrolled, or a memorial statue of some kind to honor Officer Lennahan. Council directed staff to discuss with the family and the department on their preferences, and then report back. So, after those discussions, staff is exploring the following. The first is naming of Police Officer Tyler "Ty" Lennahan Memorial Highway on State Route 99, the naming of the Elk Grove Police Campus to the Ty Lennahan's Public Safety Center, and installing a Military Street Banner to honor Ty's military service to our country. Regarding the Memorial Highway, so Assembly Member Jim Cooper introduced the Assembly Concurrent Resolution ACR 194 to the California Legislature in May. This would designate the portion of State Route 99 between Sheldon and Grantline Roads as the Police Officer Tyler "Ty" Lennahan Memorial Highway. ACR 194 will be up for final consideration in August. The Police Department Campus would be named the Ty Lennahan Public Safety Center. This would include the 8380, 8400, and Studio Court Buildings. The next steps for this would be, we need to solidify locations of the signage, select the signage material, and get quotes for cost. And then, we'll need to revisit the city facility naming policy at a future council meeting. Currently, an honorary would need to be deceased for two years under our current policy. For the Military Street Banner, the city would like to honor Officer Lennahan's service with the Military Street Banner. Officer Lennahan was an aircraft structural maintenance journeyman in the United States Air Force. The next steps for this would be return to council with a residency requirement waiver for consideration. Currently, you need to either live here or have lived here, either involved in a service organization or went to school within Elk Grove. So, under those requirements, we would need to request a waiver. Just to recap for our next steps, for the Memorial Highway, a legislature approval of the highway name is still needed. We would then need to coordinate signage costs and installation with call charts. Regarding the campus naming, we'll need to revisit the city facility naming policy for the research, signage, costs, and funding sources. And then, for the Military Banner, return to council with a residency requirement waiver. So, at this point, I'm available for questions.
Thank you for that excellent presentation. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Yes?
I do have a question. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for doing the work of looking into all of this, and I appreciate the solutions coming forward. Is there any reason why we moved away from renaming the street?
Carrie, do you?
Just a discussion with the Police Department staff and the family. I think the preference was to name the campus instead of the street.
That's all I needed. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions, thank you so much for your presentation. We will move on to our next item, our new hire introductions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council. Jason Verhman, City Manager. Always my pleasure to introduce our new employees over the last quarter, as well as those who have been promoted to new positions. So, we have quite a few new hires and promotions, so grateful for them being here with us this evening. We'll go ahead and start with our Police Department, and Evan Solomon will be introducing.
I assume they're coming in?
They're trying to make way through the crowd. We're going to go grab them.
Good evening, Council, Vice Mayor and Mayor. I'm Paul Solomon, your Assistant Chief of Police. And we have a few individuals who are here tonight. As expected, with a 24/7 operation, we have quite a few people who couldn't make it today. But I would like to introduce you to those that could make it today. On my, well, the first one here, Hannah Epino. She was appointed to the Police Department on June 19 of 2022. She was born and raised in Manila, Philippines. She received her Bachelor's Degree in Arts and Humanities at the University of Asia and the Pacific Manila. Hannah moved to the United States at 21-years-old. Prior to joining EGPD, Hannah worked with the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department for almost six years. Away from work, she enjoys snowboarding, traveling, and checking out new restaurants and local coffee shops. Next to her, we have Record Supervisor Mallory Moreno. She was promoted on May 18 of 2022. Mallory started with Elk Grove PD on January 3, 2012. Prior to promoting, Mallory served as Record Technician 2 in our Records Bureau. And the last one that we have here today is Communication Intelligence Specialist Andrea Cortez. Andrea Cortez, she was promoted on April 24 of 2022. Andrea started with Elk Grove PD on August 14, 2011. Prior to promoting, Andrea served as the Supervisor in our Records Bureau. As a CIS, she is currently signed to our Real-Time Information Center. And that's who we have for you tonight. Congratulations, and welcome.
Thank you. Before Assistant Chief Solomon sits down, I need to, I know you guys all know him, but he recently was promoted to the Assistant Chief of Police position. Really, really happy for him, and really excited to see what he's going to be able to do in his new capacity. Paul's been with us since the beginning, a Chartered Member of the Police Department, has risen up through the ranks, Sergeant, Lieutenant, Captain, and now Assistant Chief of Police, has served in every capacity really in the agency, has been instrumental in seeing the department continue to advance. So, congratulations.
Well deserved.[1115.13][1115.13](Applause). The new hardware looks good on your collar, Chief Solomon.
Next, we have some new introductions for new employees in our City Manager's Office. I'm going to have first introduce our Deputy City Manager, Kara Reddick.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council. My name is Kara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. Tonight, I'm here to introduce Crystal Love-Lazard. She started with the city on April 25. Crystal's our new Community Engagement and Government Relations Manager. She brings 17 years of experience working with local government and stakeholder groups throughout California, and she's passionate about engaging, supporting, and connecting with people with diverse styles and backgrounds. And I don't know if Leslie's here. She must not be here, so I will introduce one person that you'll meet, or you already know. Leslie Callen, she's with our Multimedia Specialist in Public Affairs. She started on April 11. And Leslie was a small business owner and photographer for 12 years before coming to work at the city as a Multimedia Specialist. So, you'll meet her if you don't know her already.
Great. Thank you.
Welcome.[1180.33][1180.33](Applause).
One person that I'd like to just briefly introduce that's not here is my new Executive Assistant, Shannon Hoffmeyer. She's out of town, visiting some family, but I know she's introduced herself in person and virtually to all the council members, so really grateful to have her on board. She brings a lot of experience and education to the position, so she's doing great and off to a great start. So, I'll introduce or invite up Christopher Jordan to talk about a few of his new staff as well in City Manager's Office. Christopher.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm happy to introduce two new members to Strategic Playing and Innovation. First is Kaylee Lyons, our new Senior Transportation Planner. She'll be helping develop short and long-range transportation plans, coordinating with SECOG and other regional and state transportation partners, and overseeing the relationship with regional transit, among many other things. She's got a Master's Degree in City Planning from San Diego State. For the last three years, she's been with the San Francisco County Transportation Authority developing policy and programming recommendations for local, regional, state, and federal funding, managing calls for projects, and developing grant applications. Prior to San Francisco, she was a Sustainability Specialist at San Mateo County, a planner at Alta Planning and Design, and a project coordinator at Circulate San Diego. Our second new member is Ash Kumar. She's with our, she's our new Management Analyst, and will be helping on a variety of projects and innovation efforts. She was born and raised in the western part of India, and has been in the United States since 2016. She is an urban planner with a Master's Degree in Public Administration. Prior to joining the city, she worked at the city of Decatur in Georgia. She is proud to serve as the President-elect for the International Network of Asian Public Administrators. We're also very excited that she speaks four languages fluently and is learning two others. We're putting those skills to the use later. So, thank you.
Welcome.[1290.21][1290.21](Applause).
Yeah, next, we'll have our Public Works Director, Jeff Warner, come up and introduce his staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Happy to introduce six new employees in the Public Works Department for you. First, as they make their way up here, we have Mr. Keith Jukes. He comes to us after five years with the City of Rockland, 10 years with the GEI Consultants before that, and five years with the City of Sacramento. He's a SAC State alumni, and when not engineering, he enjoys performing on the accordion with the Celtic rock band Black Eyed Dempsey's, a success story of an Elk Grove garage.[1343.33][1343.33](Laughter). Christina Castro is our new Capital Program Manager, and oh, by the way, Keith is a Senior Civil Engineer in the Capital Program Division. Christina Castro is the new CIP Manager. She has joined us from the City of Vacaville, where she worked six years creating and managing the Capital Improvement Program for their Utilities Division. She also acquired 10 years of experience with the City of Dixon's Public Works Department in design, construction, management, and development review. She's also a SAC State graduate and loves playing sports or being active in her free time. Travis Kuhn also comes to us from the City of Vacaville. He's a Senior Civil Engineer overseeing our Drainage Engineering Program. He has 10 years performing design, construction management, and project management on water and wastewater projects. He is an alumni of SAC State. Stingers up. And he competed on the school's bass fishing team. He lives in nearby Galt and enjoys being outdoors in his free time, whether that be fishing or working on outdoor projects and tending to his animals at home, and I'm looking forward to my first batch of eggs soon to be delivered. Scott Schultz is our new Integrated Waste Manager, or, I'm sorry, Recycling and Waste Division Manager. He comes to us after 13 years with Green Waste of Palo Alto, working on a variety of innovative programs. He was instrumental in launching Palo Alto's commercial food waste collection program, which come in very handy as we launch ours now, implementing the city's recycling and composting ordinance, and initiating an electric collection fleet. Scott earned his degree at San Jose State while playing for the water polo team, as you can see. Probably did very well there, and he enjoys playing with his two-year-old daughter, hiking, and playing basketball. Not with us this evening is Omi Hartman, who was recently promoted to the, from the Finance Department up to Public Works as our Commercial Recycling Coordinator. He loves sports and is currently coaching basketball at Casuna Oaks High School. And finally, we have Carrie Monte. Surprise, surprise, Carrie was recently promoted this month to Management Analyst in the Operations and Maintenance Division. She is excited to learn and grow in this new role while applying her nearly 15 years of Elk Grove knowledge. So, we're happy to have Carrie. Thank you.
Welcome, everybody.[1473.26][1473.26](Applause).
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring up our Finance Director, Matt Paulin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have three employees to introduce to you, two new employees and one promotion. So, the first employee I'd like to introduce to you is Christina Scott. She joined our cashiering team May the 23rd. Christina has worked in customer service for over 20 years, with the majority of those years spent in the hospitality industry, and she's resided in Elk Grove since 2015. Our second new hire is Jen Jacobs. She's our new Admin Assistant in the Finance Department. She's also an Elk Grove resident and came to us from the California Special Districts Association. Jen has a degree in Business Administration. And the third and final finance employee is Nancy Sanchez. She joined our team last year as the new Senior Customer Service Specialist in the cashier's office, but she was promoted to Payroll Technician on this June, last June 27. She came to the city after spending 17 years working for Kids Dental Care. She's an Elk Grove resident, and her son, Robert, is an Elk Grove Police Officer.
Welcome. Congratulations.[1548.91][1548.91](Applause).
All right. Next, we have Nicole Guttridge from our Information Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am thrilled to introduce you to Lori Archoa. She has joined that Information Services Department on May 10, and she will be supporting both GIS and IT. Before working at the city, Lori has 18 years of credit union experience, and her and her family moved from Iowa 15 years ago, and they fell in love with the hometown feeling of Elk Grove. They also have three dogs, enjoy walking all the trails in Elk Grove, and her husband is a smidge nervous that she has so much access to the animal shelter now and might bring home a new friend. They are also big Dodgers fans, so go Dodgers for Lori, sorry Giants fans, but we're excited to have her. Welcome, anyway. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome.[1602.33][1602.33](Applause).
All right. And finally, our Human Resource Director, Melissa Rojas.
As you can see, Human Resources has been busy. Good evening, Melissa Rojas, Human Resources Director. So, I have two employees to introduce to you tonight. The first one is Miriam Hussein. Miriam joined the City of Elk Grove in November of 2021 as a Human Resources Specialist. Over the course of the past nine months, Miriam has worked in a variety of areas, including recruitment and selection, onboarding, payroll and benefits administration, performance management, and HR analytics and reporting. She quickly became a very strong leader in the department. Following a competitive process, Miriam really recently earned a promotion to the level of Senior Human Resources Analyst. Miriam is extremely excited to be able to serve the Elk Grove community in this new capacity and to contribute to the community that she lives in. All right. And then, we also have Kristin Callahan. Kristin is joining the City of Elk Grove as a Human Resources Specialist, who will work primarily in recruitment and selection in support of the Police Department. Kristin previously worked for Stanford University, where she supported the Chief of Police and their recruitment efforts there. Kristin is a runner, and although she does not always love running, she loves what it does for her mind, body, and soul. Kristin also loves watching movies with her family and is super excited to be a part of a workforce and a city that embraces everyone.
Welcome, both of you.[1697.83][1697.83](Applause).
That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. All right. We are on to our next item, Item Five, Public Comment.
And the purpose of this public comment section is that for members of the audience who have topics that wish, they wish to comment on that are not on the agenda, but is of interest to the public and within the subject matter, jurisdiction of the City Council, is that opportunity for each person to be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the Council or City Manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer that public comment during consideration of that item.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you.
All right, excellent. All right, we are on to our next item. Item five, public comment.
And the purpose of this public comment section is that for members of the audience who have topics that wish, they wish to comment on that are not on the agenda, but is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, is that opportunity for each person to be allowed three minutes or less of a large number of requests received on a particular subject. City council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer that public comment during consideration of that item. And we do have four speakers that are signed up to speak for general public comment, and we'd invite anyone, get those blue speaker cards in now if we have other interests for general public comment.
All right, we will start with Bob Turner, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Council members, this is some goodies I'll show you in a few minutes. My name is Bob Turner, and I live on Palhemos Drive, which is located on Elk Grove Boulevard north and east of Elk Grove Flureon Road, just past Kerr Junior High. It's the old Walnut Orchard area. These homes were built in the mid-1970s. Of the 15 homeowners that I've contacted, four are the original owners. And the reason I'm here is the paving of the street of Palhemos and Nut Tree Court. This started on June the 20th of this year. Martin's Paving Asphalt Company was painting only the marks that were made by the utility companies. They weren't paving the street at all. Well, the results looked like crap. On Thursday, June the 23rd, I contacted Matt Palmquist of Martin's Paving. He stated that the corn oil-based black sand product needs cool weather and rain for it to properly seal. So in July, August, and September of Elk Grove, how many days are you going to have that's not below 90? So, the streets have all this little material on them like this. There's a bag I gave, there you, you have it right up there. One of the people that was with me brought a larger bag. Well, what happens? This sticks to the tires on your car as you drive down the street. You pull in your driveway, it pulls off there, it falls out on the driveway. It gets, when you get out of your vehicle, it gets on the bottom of the shoes, and you take it in the house. Everybody likes that, of course. So, on that afternoon, I contacted Councilman Hume. I left a quick message. I also contacted the city manager about this being unacceptable. Well, at 1:30 in the afternoon, I received a call from the city of Elk Grove Public Works Supervisor, and I'm sorry, I can't pronounce his name properly. Shawby, Shawb, close. I explained the situation and the circumstances, that the paving material was unacceptable. It needs to be fixed. Well, on Friday, July the 1st, Matt Palmquist of the company called me, stated that I needed to get with Dennis, the public works inspector for the city. Well, on Tuesday, July the 5th, after the 4th of July weekend, at approximately 10:15 in the morning, my wife, Alice, talked with Dennis. He wanted to set up an appointment so we could talk with the neighbors. Well, this was set up for on Tuesday, July the 12th at 10:00 in the morning. Dennis met with us, we stated our problems, stated our concerns, and we had 12 of the 15 homeowners in the area appear. Well, the following three areas are streets that have been repaved recently and are nice and smooth, no problem with driving over them. Elk Grove Flureon Road, south of the city park, beautiful. In East Elk Grove, Sheldon Road between Waterman and Bradshaw, just got paved.
Sir, your time's up, sir.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, may I ask a question of?
Yes, certainly.
Yes, sir, so I was curious, how many streets was that again, and if you could give me more detail?
Well, the three I have that I was, the one south of the park on Elk Grove Flureon Road, and the one east side is Sheldon Road between Waterman and Bradshaw, and also in East Elk Grove, off of Waterman is Rancho Drive to Cupertino. These are perfect, very nice.
Thank you.
But as you can see, this is crap.
Thank you.
If I may, real quick, Madam Mayor, after you contacted me, Mr. Turner, I got ahold of public works staff, they were already planning on going out to look. I just want to make it noted that this was a private contractor on behalf of a private company. Doesn't excuse the fact of what's going on, but we're trying to make sure that they're held to a better standard, but it was not the city contracting that work to be done.
Thank you.
All I was told was this had been approved through the city.
Right.
So it needs to be corrected.
Would it be possible, please, to ask you, Mr. Warner, if you would?
If you would connect with Mr. Warner?
Yeah, we're certainly aware of the issue, and we actually had a meeting with Frontier today to explore options for them to improve and also look at alternatives to the sand slurry.
Okay, very good.
As long as somebody wants to.
Thank you, sir.
As long as somebody wants to do something about it.
Next up, we have Lynn Wheat, followed by Durya Said. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This evening, I have brought with me our city's general plan. This is the guiding plan and policies for the development of our city, and I have been quite active in land use planning. Since the beginning of my checking rezones and general plan updates, I've followed and have tried to keep a list of them. So we've had approximately 73 general plan amendments and updates. Now, this general plan update was adopted in 2019, and since then, we've had a number of general plan updates and rezones, but they've been bundled together. So by state law, you can do four amendments to your general plan, and indeed, we have done that to many projects. And some of those projects have fallen into special planning areas, so we've determined that something better might fit there, and we'll change that. So it didn't really matter what that special planning area said. Our city, in your wisdom, changed those plans. Now, I may or may not have agreed with them, but that's how it happened. The other thing that I want to bring to your attention is the flyers that have been going out to the homeowners concerning a possible sales tax increase. Now, in this, it talks about safety, and of course, I'm concerned about our safety in the town, and this is why when we did this general plan update, I was very active in the process, because I wanted to make sure we had really good policies for our residents now and into the future. Well, I want to draw your attention, and I hope that you will look at it, but in 8-40 of our general plan, the policy, it reads, "The established response time goal for the department is the first-time unit should arrive on the scene within seven minutes of the receipt of the 911 call in the dispatch center 90% of the time." So we wrote it as a policy. We were not ever anticipating meeting a five-minute requirement. That was not going to happen. Next, we can talk about traffic. This is an overriding consideration in our general plan update. There's a document that accompanies this, that has to support this document. So through our legal department and processes, we wrote that we're all going to live with traffic, we're not going to build our way out of it, we'll have to address it in other means. What you attempted to do at one of your city council retreats, and I have all that information also, but I want you to know, we're living with the traffic because you believed economic development was much more important. And so now, are we going to place that on the backs of our taxpayers to find, try to fix something that you all chose to adopt as a policy? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheat. Next up is Durya Said, followed by Joseph De La Cruz.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm honored for this opportunity to share with you a program from California Department of Insurance. Few of you know me from the community, but today I'm wearing the hat for the California Department of Insurance. My name is Durya Said, and I'm an analyst in the Community Relations and Outreach Branch of the Department of Insurance. I'm thrilled to bring you California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, a state-sponsored program created by the legislatures to offer liability insurance to income-eligible, low to moderate-income, good and new drivers in California, regardless of their immigration status. So you must be thinking, how do I, how do people qualify? They must have a valid California driver's license or an AB-60 license. Value of the vehicle must be $25,000 or less, be at least 16 years old, meet income eligibility's, you know. It's about $69,000 for four people of household, cannot have bad driving record, so it's available for good or new drivers that meet the income guidelines regardless of their immigration status. And the documents to need to apply for that is valid driver's license or AB-60 license, valid car registration, down payment of 20% of annual premium, and proof of income. It can be a paycheck, W-2, or even a statement of benefit card from CalFresh, Medi-Cal, or other state or county programs. And even if the individual cannot provide that, a proof of income document, they can fill out a self-attest form to verify they meet the income guidelines. So it's an amazing program. In Elk Grove, it's $317 for an annual premium for a driver who's 24 years or older. So how do people apply for the program? They can just simply go on www.milocostauto and take the eligibility questionnaire, and it's only seven questions, okay? Or you can apply directly through a certified agent, ask questions on the website that the, through the chat, available in both English and Spanish, and call 866-602-8861 with any questions. If the constituent have all the forms ready and the down payment, they could be insured the same day by applying directly through an agent. And more than that, I just wanted to be here at the city council and offer that Department of Insurance, we are 1,400 public servants, and we are available for city of Elk Grove for their need. I'm really proud to say that our whole time is 22 minutes, and if anybody's having any insurance issue, we'll walk through them step by step. So I do want you to take, you know, advantage of our services and, you know, want to do events, that diversity events, other events, what we want to bring our California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program or our Safer Wildfire, you know, initiative. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Durya, so good to see you. Next up is Joseph De La Cruz.
Hello. Hello, my name is Joseph De La Cruz, and I'm here to speak about the proper against the homeless, and, that I am myself, I'm homeless, and I, I wanted to speak about, you know, putting this building over against it, saying that, you know, if we're going to help out someone, let's help out people from Elk Grove, not just residents that are just moving into this county. I fell in hard times, I got myself back on my feet, and I, all I could say is, I had a praying wife and family that pushed me forward. Starbucks and Bel Air on Waterman, the food bank, they have encouraged me, and I just kept on going forward. It's hard, and it's hot out there, but not everyone in these streets is a crackhead or a drug dealer or a gang member. People do want to change. I myself left that life alone, and I guess I just want to say that people should help out the people of Elk Grove, not bring this building over here. I support drug testing, and I support people that want to help out the Elk Grove, not a bunch of people that are coming to this county to start something, so that's what I wanted to share. And for people that are bumping to me and my beautiful wife, you know, we just try to encourage people and help out the people on Walmart that are on drugs, that used to be my friends, and now I'm choosing to be a part of this, this city in a positive way. And I had an awesome pastor named Pastor Art from Stockton, California, that just never found a counselor, but he still believed in me. And I just want to share my story with everyone from Elk Grove, that there's people out here that are hurting, but there is some that really want to change, just need a little support. Thank you for your time, and God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for sharing your story. Okay, I'm gonna, hard to transition from that. We will transition to our next item, so I don't see any more public comments. I'm going to close the public comment opportunity and go on to item six, our city manager's report.
All right, a few items to report on this evening. First is our civic summer program. We talked about that a little bit before, but it's wrapping up. We had 42 Elk Grove students participate in the program this year for two weeks of classroom-style learning, followed by three weeks of internships with government and community partners. Students will complete the program with the graduation ceremony this Friday at District A little information about the ongoing drought. Elk Grove is under a stage-two drought restriction. The city and Casuna CSD are doing our part to conserve water by reducing irrigation for parks and street landscaping. Both agencies are prioritizing water use for street, for trees, and as well as high-use recreational areas. Residents can help protect our limited water supply by reporting broken sprinklers and leaks in parks or streetscapes to the Casuna CSD Park main. Its hotline, 916-405-5688, or through the See Click Fix Elk Grove mobile app, available as a free download through the Apple and Android stores. Casuna CSD and the city will host a grand opening for Elk Grove's 101st play space, Entrickin Park, next Thursday, August 4th at 6:00 p.m. The community is invited to attend and celebrate this new community addition. Entrickin Park is located in the southeast area at 10-500 Allegra Drive. More information is available on the city's website. And a long-awaited return of the Strauss Festival is coming this week. City is pleased to be a presenting sponsor at the Strauss Festival. This magical outdoor production features a live orchestra, local dancers, returns after that two-year hiatus. Nightly shows will be offered throughout the weekend, starting tomorrow at Elk Grove Park. The prelude begins at 7:30 p.m. The show starts at 8:15. Admission is free, parking is $10. The police department will host the next barbecue in the Beat event in the Laguna area, Beat Two, this Saturday, July 30th, at Mewock Park, which is 9344 Vintage Tree Drive, from 11 to 2 p.m. These events offer the community a chance to connect with officers and enjoy games, free barbecue, lunch, vehicles and equipment displays from the police department and the fire department. Visit the police department Facebook page for more information. Also, we have National Night Out, another opportunity to connect with our wonderful police department. Elk Grove neighbors will connect with each other, as well as local law enforcement during this event, which is next Tuesday, August 2nd. Police department personnel will visit several block parties that night to support community connections and promote safe neighborhoods. Couple of big events we have coming up at our new aquatic center, swim meets over the next two weeks. First, the Sacramento Valley Meet of Champions will take place this weekend, July 30th and 31st, with more than 800 young swimmers participating. Next weekend, August 3rd through 6th, the Aquatic Center will host the Western Zone Long Course Championship. This is a 50-meter event that draws 800 of the best athletes from the western United States. The Aquatic Center will be closed for other regular programming to accommodate these events. We look forward to welcoming the teams into our city and wish them great success during these competitions. There's a tire amnesty collection program at the Special Waste Collection Center, which collected 2,247 tires during the first half of 2022. Bulky items were diverted from the landfills and recycled to make tire chips, a substitute for gravel and garden mulch. Residents can participate in the next collection event scheduled for August 7th through 10th. Details are on the city's website. We have a upcoming town hall opportunity to learn more about the work that's going on related to possible zoo in Elk Grove. Zoo and city staff will host a community town hall meeting to discuss the project on Wednesday, August 17th at 6:00 p.m. in the community center at District 56. Members of the project team will be on hand to present the draft conceptual plan and hear input from members of our community. And finally, the city allocated $2 million in American Rescue Plan Act funding for workforce development programs to upskill and reemploy unemployed or underemployed Elk Grove residents. Last month, the city released a formal RFP for service providers to administer the workforce development training and certification programs in the field of healthcare, information technology, and manufacturing. A total of eight proposals were received, totaling $3.1 million in requests. Five proposals were in the field of information technology, one in healthcare, one in manufacturing, and one combined all three fields. Staff will be conducting an internal review process and will be returning to council with funding recommendations at a future meeting. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right, thank you for your report. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Seeing none, thank you, sir. All right, we will move on to our next item, our consent calendar items. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity. Seeing no one signed up, I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve our consent calendar.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Which takes us to item 8.1. Which takes us to item 8.1.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Sarah Bontrager, your Housing and Public Services Manager. I am here tonight just to kick off this presentation on the Oak Grove Apartments with some background information on permanent supportive housing, after which I will turn it over to Kira Killingsworth, our Senior Planner, to talk about the specifics of this project. So just to start with a little bit of background, since there has been a lot of public comment on this item, and want to make sure that we're all starting with the same understanding. Permanent supportive housing is a model of housing that combines healthcare, supportive services, and housing to help people who are formerly homeless to lead more stable lives. It is long-term housing. People are meant to stay there for as long as they need to. It is not a homeless shelter. It is not transitional housing. We do have other transitional housing resources in the city. This would not be one of them. And it is not a residential treatment center. There is no onsite substance abuse treatment or other treatment of that nature. Our projects regionally, permanent supportive housing projects regionally have a 95% or greater success rate at keeping people housed, meaning that people are rarely evicted from these projects, and they tend to stay a long time once they move in. You'll notice in the presentation that I have some pictures of different permanent supportive housing projects. These are all projects that are in our region. The target population for permanent supportive housing is really people who are chronically homeless. Generally, that means they've been homeless for at least one year. They have at least one disabling condition, and that can be a physical disability, a mental disability, or both. They are considered highly vulnerable, so they're likely to be victims of crime or to encounter serious problems when living outside. And they need intensive support to remain housed. So they need case management to make sure that they can be stable in their housing, to make sure that they're taking care of their health needs and other needs to live successfully independently. So residents are selected for permanent supportive housing through a system called Coordinated Entry, and that's operated at the county level. Basically, when a person is looking for housing, they connect with a navigator or a social service worker who does an assessment with them. They run through a number of factors to assess how vulnerable the person is, and those who are most vulnerable are prioritized for permanent supportive housing. We here in Elk Grove enroll our people experiencing homelessness into Coordinated Entry. Our navigator serves as the front door for that, and she does quite a few assessments to get folks on the list. So when being considered for permanent supportive housing, residents do undergo a process similar to what they would undergo for market-rate housing. There is a credit and criminal background check. Permanent supportive housing projects are not exempt from the restrictions on registered sex offenders that other properties also have. And so in cases where the properties are nearby schools or parks, registered sex offenders would not be allowed at those properties. And residents at these properties, like all of our affordable housing and market-rate housing, pay rent and utilities. They typically have 12-month leases, and they could be evicted just like anyone else for lease violations, including disruptive behavior. On-site, there are quite a few services that are provided to residents, the first and foremost being some intensive case management. So a case manager is assigned to the people who live in permanent supportive housing. They visit the person usually in their own apartment to help them figure out what they need to be successful, and then helps them to get those services. There's really a focus on helping people to live independently and build good tenant skills. Eventually, the hope is that folks will move on into less supportive housing, usually still affordable housing, but without all of the supports. There's often a healthcare component that's offered on-site. Connections are made to substance abuse and mental health treatment, often through county resources, to employment training for those folks who are able to be employed, and to other benefits and educational opportunities. Affordable housing is a little, permanent supportive housing is one component of affordable housing. We have a lot of affordable housing in the city. We have 18 affordable complexes currently totaling over 2,300 units, and we have three more projects that are on the way, that are either under construction or are expected to go to construction this fall. And that's almost another 800 units. None of them include a permanent supportive housing component. So affordable housing tends to serve folks who may or may not have a history of homelessness. They're just low-income. We do try to connect our households experiencing homelessness with regular affordable housing as often as we can, but for some folks, they need some additional supports in order to be able to be successful in housing, and that's where permanent supportive housing comes in. But from the perspective of the complexes, management is very similar. Tenants have leases, they pay rent. As you can see, this is the only photo in my presentation that's of an affordable housing complex that's not permanent supportive housing. This one is the Avery Gardens project here in Elk Grove. It looks similar to much of the permanent supportive housing in the region. So there are community amenities, just like with our other affordable housing. There is always onsite office space for the property manager and for case management staff, so they have the opportunity to be located on-site. Typically, there's a property management unit that is allocated to, so the property manager lives on-site in permanent supportive housing. And there are indoor and outdoor spaces for community gathering, for programming at the site. And the average length of stay in permanent supportive housing is over nine years, as I mentioned, a long time. The tenancies tend to be really stable, in part because there are not enough other affordable housing resources out there that folks can successfully move. And there are several local examples. I have highlighted a bunch of them in the photos here. We have a lot of nonprofit developers in the region that have built permanent supportive housing. There are projects in Sacramento. There's one under construction in Citrus Heights. Folsom has two projects. Rancho Cordova has at least two, and unincorporated Sacramento County has several. Tours of many of the projects are available. If the council or members of the public are interested in tours, I'm happy to facilitate that. So I will now turn it over to Kira, who will talk about the Oak Grove Apartments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Kira Killingsworth, and I'm the Senior Planner for the Oak Grove Project. I'm here to present to you a few items tonight that you'll consider. The first item is the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to deny the application for eligibility of the Senate Bill 35 Ministerial Review. Next is the request from the applicant for a development standard waiver to allow residential uses on the ground level, a request for a density bonus for 100% of the affordable housing, and to go along with the affordable housing regulatory agreement. Just to give you a little bit of background, the application was reviewed upon SB 35. This was part of a housing package in the California State in 2018. It's for projects that are multifamily dwelling projects that are infill, and they have to meet a certain criteria to comply with a ministerial review process. The city of Elk Grove is needed to do this SB 35 or provide this option to projects because not meeting our regional housing needs allocation numbers. During the SB 35 process, qualifying projects again are through a ministerial process, no discretionary. The city may have an oversight hearing, and they're California-exempt, CEQA-exempt. The application must meet objective standards from the city, which are from the general plan, the Title 23 zoning, the Elk Grove Municipal Code, and the Old Town Special Planning Area Guidelines. Some of the criteria that is needed is the project must have two or more units, more than 50% of the units must be affordable housing, has to be infilled, more than 75% must be in a residential mixed-use zoning. The location means that it cannot be in a fire hazard area, cannot be in a flood zone, cannot be in a wetlands, and there cannot be any historic buildings on-site, and it has to meet objective standards. Just to give a little background on the project itself, the Oak Grove Apartments would be located at 9252 Elk Grove Boulevard, which is located in the Old Town Special Planning Area. The site is vacant. It's about 1.23 acres, except one acre is about buildable because there's a kind of odd shape that you could see in the map. And the zone is in the Old Town Special Planning Area Commercial. The project is near a mix of uses. There's commercial, vacant property, high-density residential, single-family residential, and adjacent to the new location of the library. There is a historic property next door, but not on-site. Old Town Special Planning Area does allow residential and commercial zones. The only thing it allows, it has to be mixed use. The SPA describes residential on the second and third levels with pedestrian-oriented commercial on ground level. The maximum density in the Old Town is 32 units per acre, and that's why there's the request for density bonus. Oak Grove Apartments, as proposed, would be a three-story building, about 33 feet high. The maximum height is 35 feet because it's adjacent to residential. Part of the project would be new landscaping, new lighting, and again, it would be 67 units, 66 studios, and one one-bedroom manager's unit. Level one would have the offices that would be for on-site services and 19 residential studio units. Level two would have 25 studio units, and level three would have 22 units plus the manager's unit. There will be eight parking spaces in the rear, and part of this proposal, five oak trees will be removed. The access would be from a shared driveway on the east side of the property. So as mentioned, as part of the SB 35 process, the city can have an oversight meeting, which the city did. The oversight meeting was with the Planning Commission, and it was held on June 2nd. There was 24 residents who made comments during the public comment. However, the Planning Commission reviewed and determined that they agreed with staff's recommendation that it did not comply with the objective standards, that in the Old Town SPA has stated that residential cannot be on the first level and therefore did not meet the objective standards and could not comply with the SB 35 streamline. The applicant filed a timely appeal of the Commission's decision, and the applicant provided six grounds of appeal, which are all addressed in detail of the council staff report. Staff refers the council to pages 6 through 13 of the staff report that goes more in detail of the six grounds that you've seen in front of you. In addition to the appeal, before you is the development standard waiver. The applicant is requesting a waiver to allow residential units on the first level. However, staff determined that this is not qualified because development standard is defined as a site or construction condition, for example, height, setback, parking. Commercial zoning is a land use requirement, not a development standard. So therefore, staff believes that this is not eligible for review. The next is the density bonus. It's 100% affordable. They want 67 total units. That's 37 units more than the density allows. However, 19 of those units will be on the ground level, and therefore, staff believes this is mute. As part of the density bonus, the request of affordable housing regulatory agreement would be needed. This is required with the density bonus. However, if the density bonus is a mute, therefore, the agreement would be mute as well. But if the density bonus is granted, the agreement is needed to ensure that affordability would be long-term. Kind of three options for the fiscal impact. If the appeal is denied, then there's no change. If the appeal is granted, there are kind of two options, two scenarios. The applicant would be qualified for affordable housing fee waiver. If the appeal was granted, density bonus was granted, as well as the regulatory agreement. And then there's also another scenario for if there was a reduction of the density bonus, such as the units on the ground level would not be allowed. As mentioned earlier, staff is recommending denial, so it's exempt from CEQA. But either way, if the council finds it is eligible for SB 35, projects under SB 35 are not exempt from CEQA as well. With that, the council has some actions to think about. One action is to deny the appeal, and that's what staff is recommending. The second action you can consider is, does this project comply with SB 35? If the council decides that, they can approve the project and the density bonus, as well as the regulatory agreement. The third is, attentively approve the density bonus with less than 67 units. Have approval of the density bonus for 48 units, which would mean no residential units on the first level, and that would be 48 units. That concludes my presentation. I am available for questions, and the applicant is here as well for a presentation.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will declare the public hearing is open and invite the applicant to speak.
Is that right? Did I do the wrong one?
Yeah.
Click on the mouse. No, click on this. The arrow. Okay. The arrows are where? There. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Dana Trujillo, the CEO of Accelerate Housing Group.
Hi, and I'm Erin Johansson. I'm the CEO of Hope Cooperative.
And as partners, we're here to talk about Oak Grove Apartments and our organizations and the project that we're hoping that you consider, despite the staff's recommendation to deny our request. So Accelerate Housing Group, so our partnership is based on our collective expertise that we bring together to do permanent supportive housing. Accelerate is an affordable housing development company that does affordable housing and some moderate-income housing throughout the state of California. And Erin's group.
So Hope Cooperative has been providing permanent supportive housing in mental health and substance abuse services, homeless services, for 41 years in the county of Sacramento.
So we bring the real estate expertise, and Hope Cooperative brings the knowledge of the local homeless issue and a longstanding track record of serving homeless individuals and families in the Sacramento region. For us, so we were working together prior to starting the Oak Grove Apartments project. We have a project that's going to start construction in Sacramento. And I sort of have always thought Elk Grove was a really great city. My daughter's godparents lived in Elk Grove for many years. I have a college friend who lives here, who I'm actually staying with tonight, have been to Elk Grove, you know, several times visiting them. And when I think about housing as a developer, regardless if I'm serving, you know, seniors or families or people that are experiencing homelessness, I always want to build housing in places that I would want to live, that I think are great cities. So together with our development team, we looked at what was on the market in the city of Elk Grove, and we found this site on Elk Grove Boulevard that was for sale, that we thought was fantastic. We then, you know, negotiated with the seller and bought the property. it's vibrant, and there's so much to do. That site is really walkable for people who don't have, you know, a, a lot of means to be able to just walk to grocery stores, pharmacies, park, the library that's going to be, um, built next door. It's just a, it provides a fabulous opportunity for people who have limited resources. Um, so that really drew us to the site and why we wanted to do permanent supportive housing there. Um, we, um, you know, partnered with a, uh, an architect to design something that, you know, tried to meet the city's criteria for the Oak Grove area. When we were working with planning, there were comments that we received back that we made changes on, and what we've come up with, um, I think is a really, really, really cute apartment building that will bring a lot of needed housing to people that are, that are really in need. And just as a side note, when I found out the site, we were buying the site from the widow of Merle Haggard, I was super excited because I'm a huge country fan. Um, so it sort of felt like fate to me. Um, so anyways, so together with Hope Cooperative, we developed this concept for 67 units, came up with a design, worked together on the site plan, um, and, you know, and are now in front of the city asking you to consider our project. And, you know, I, uh, there's been a lot of back and forth in our application process. Um, and a part of that is because our SB 35 application wa- was considered prior to our density bonus application, and so there's an appeal and the, you know, it's very technical in nature. And for me, you know, it seems that it boils down to the question about commercial on the ground floor in terms of the steps that are needed for us to get this project to move forward. That, that is the, the sort of bottleneck issue. The 67.
No. Please, let's, let's hear from them. Thank you.
Okay, so the 67 unit, the density bonus request, is, you know, allowable for 100% affordable projects, which this is. And the waiver is being requested because to do the 67 studios, we would either need to have to add a fourth floor, or we would need to stilt the, the units on two to three stories and extend into the back, which is much more costly than putting the projects on the first floor. I also think it's, it's good practice in a project that's serving 100% disabled population to offer units that are, you know, where you don't have to take an elevator that are accessible from the ground floor. And we have front-loaded the commercial and tried to make the front of the building commercial in nature so that we meet the, uh, pedestrian-oriented, um, design criteria within the plan. I know that there is a lot of consternation from the public about, you know, about homeless people. And we heard from the gentleman earlier, who is a really good example of someone who transitions from experiencing homelessness to being housed, and with the support that he received from his pastor and his wife, and the support that Hope Cooperative and the staff will offer the residents once they're housed, we hope to have a whole bunch of success stories, like the man that we heard from earlier. Um, I know that it's, it's difficult to, to move forward with something like this where there isn't an example of 100% PSH in Elk Grove or nearby for people to see what this looks like or how it operates. But permanent supportive housing, as, you know, Sarah did a really great job talking about what it is, and it's really an apartment building for those people that are, have the most need. And they're in need of really great amenities and awesome walking space and things to do, just like people of higher means. And I think that the city of Elk Grove should provide that, not just to those that are sheltered, but to those that are unsheltered in its city as well. We also wanted to mention that our application to the state for financing only requires 17 of our 66 units to use coordinated entry. So we're able to do targeted outreach to homeless, um, for the remaining units specifically in Elk Grove. They still have to meet the homeless criteria and be certified by service providers for their homeless status. Um, but the project only has 17 units that are dedicated, that are mandated through CES. So I just wanted to make that clear. Um, and this feels like a really great project and a really great city, and I'm hoping that we can figure out a way to make this work.
That's your plans.
Oh.
So just a little bit about us, for those of you who don't know. So Hope Cooperative has been, as I said, um, providing, uh, all kinds of services to people with all kinds of challenges for 41 years in the greater Sacramento community. We have clients that live here in Elk Grove in scattered site housing where we provide services right now, today. So, uh, we are a local provider and with a really solid reputation. Um, when, when we provide permanent supportive housing, this is a variety of types of housing that we, uh, own or operate throughout the county right now, and we have a lot of those success stories where, um, that, like the gentleman earlier, where we hope you will have those same kind of stories here in Elk Grove when, if, and if you decide to provide permanent supportive housing here. Where this is for someone's permanent home. When they move in, they're no longer homeless. What happens there is they get the kind of supportive services that help them be successful and sustain that tenancy and live forever as a housed resident, which, at, which time they contribute to the local economy, they participate in their community, and they are part of the fabric of what makes Elk Grove great. Um, we, uh, Sarah did such a good job already going through, uh, what permanent supportive housing is, so I'm not going to spend all that time. She even had a couple pictures of my properties in her presentation, so thank you for that, Sarah. Um, I did want to talk just for a second about a very new project that, um, when we presented at the Planning Commission, um, there were some comments about that this is for, for single people because these units are small studios, and that some of the projects we had shown were for families, and it wasn't really apples to apples. So I wanted to talk about a recent project that, that's not too far from here, which is called La Mancha, and it was a home key project that Mercy Housing developed about, um, a year ago. And we support 60 individuals in permanent supportive housing with wraparound services in that, uh, property. And in the first year of operation, our housing retention was 95%. Six of those residents have already obtained employment and are looking to make their next move. So we've, this project has been highlighted by the governor. It's had a lot of interest from a variety of stakeholders throughout the, the state because these home key projects were put on the ground fast. And, um, they were, a lot of money was put out quickly, and you had to respond quickly. You had 90 days to lease them up. We met all those standards, and these 60 people are living successfully, and they're housed. So that's what we want for this project as well. So we, uh, Sarah talked about all the services that are provided. It's a rich array of wraparound services, connection to primary care, linkage to mental health and substance use disorder services, employment, life skills, uh, meaningful activities, like volunteering, which is often the first step to employment, um, benefits acquisition, really important reunification with family. A lot of what you see amongst the homeless that are living on the streets are disconnection, and really, connection is what, is what makes the secret sauce. It's what helps people get back on their feet and get back into society, and that's something that they can do once they're successfully housed. So, um, these are just, this is a big laundry list of the people that we partner with. We hope we get to add you to the list, and we really appreciate, um, your, uh, willingness to hear us out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
This is, sorry, this is Karen Hallack, who wants to talk a little, she's with us, who's going to talk a little bit about the technical part of our application.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
I've done something. I'm, I have technical difficulties. Thank you, Cara, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Dana, while, while she's getting set up, can I ask a quick question? Can, can you please remind me, um, what, where the revenue comes from, from some of these individuals who may not have any, any work?
Sure. So some people come to the property without any revenue. Um, and then we have them work with, um, different public interest law firms to get them set up on benefits. A lot of people, um, most people have qualifying disabilities, but they don't have the ability or the support to go through the process of filling out all the paperwork. Um, the revenue for the property, so the rent, to make sure that the property is sustained, comes from, um, the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency through their Housing Choice voucher program. So anybody that, um, lives there, they ha- are required to pay whatever their income is, if they make $10 a year or $10,000 a year, they pay 30% of their rent, um, of their income towards rent each month. And then there's a set rent, and the SHRA pays the balance of that to make sure that the property has the income that it needs to do maintenance and, you know, pay the property management company and maintenance person and janitor.
Okay.
But then oftentimes, people's income, you know, increases because they get enrolled in the benefits that they're eligible for.
Sure, but absent that, is, SHRA is your fallback.
For the rent piece of it, yeah, SHRA, the, um, which comes through HUD, and then SHRA administers it.
Right.
So those, um, project-based vouchers is what supports the revenue to the property, yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Just one other quick point, is that part of what we do is benefit acquisition. So for folks that come with no income, that is part of the service that we provide in the wraparound services as well.
Got it, thank you both.
Were there any other questions?
No.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Members. My name is Karen Hallack. I am a land use attorney at DLA Piper, representing the applicant. Thank you so much for all of your time and your consideration this evening. California has the largest, nation's largest homeless population that is disproportionately comprised of women and children, veterans, and the chronically homeless. Given the urgent need for supportive housing, the state has adopted a streamlined and expedited approval process under SB 35 for projects such as this one, to address this growing crisis. The purpose of SB 35 is to prioritize and support and expedite affordable housing. This project, as you heard earlier, would consist of 66 units, one manager's unit, and office use on the ground level in a three-story building. The applicant is seeking a density bonus increase, a density bonus waiver of the design standard that limits residential use to the second and third floors in, um, Table 2 of the OTSPA, and also an appeal of the Planning Commission's determination that the project does not meet the one objective standard that is the subject of the applicant's density bonus waiver request, which would in turn entitle it to ministerial approval under SB 35. Under SB 35, a project must be approved in a ministerial process if it meets applicable uh, objective development standards. Uh, before applicant's density bonus hearing today on June 2nd, the Planning Commission agreed that the project meets all of the applicable standards except for the land use standard, which has been appealed. The project includes office use, fronting Elk Grove Boulevard, and 19 residential units on the ground floor, which really complies with the intent and spirit of the OTSPA with requiring pedestrian-oriented uses such as office and services along Elk Grove Boulevard. Table 2 of the OTSPA allows multifamily mixed-use with residential uses on the second and third floor, and applicant is seeking a waiver of this development standard. The staff report states that the OTSPA Table 2 prohibition on ground-floor residential uses is not a development standard, but, uh, instead, a fundamental land use standard that cannot be waived. Under density bonus law, a development standard is broadly defined as a site or construction condition, including but not limited to a height limitation, setback requirement, floor area ratio, open space, or parking requirement that applies to a residential development pursuant to any ordinance, general plan amendment, specific plan, et cetera. Although the statute expressly calls out certain standards such as setbacks and, uh, height requirements, it also contemplates a broader range of standards by the phrase "including but not limited to." And California courts have consistently held that density bonus law must be construed broadly to allow affordable housing. And if you look at Section 65915R, the density bonus law expressly states that this chapter shall be interpreted liberally in favor of producing the maximum number of total housing As stated, the staff report claims that the standard limiting residential use to the second and third floors is non-wavable and a fundamental zoning standard. However, there are several reasons why that is not the case. Residential use is permitted in the OTSPA. This is not a scenario where we are seeking residential use in a manufacturing zone or residential use in a heavy industrial zone. A- and that would be a fundamental zoning issue, but that's not what we have here. The OTSPA expressly allows residential use on this site. Restricting residential use to the second and third floors is a site condition that relates to the location of a permitted use. Is this use allowed on the first floor, the second floor, will it be on the third floor, or even fourth floor? And in fact, staff concurred that a wavable development standard is a height limitation. So in theory, we could place residential on the fourth floor under a height limitation, and that doesn't violate fundamental zoning law. But what staff is saying, the city is saying here, if you suddenly put it on the first floor, that violates fundamental zoning law. So that doesn't quite make sense. And we know that is not true because in May, the Planning Commission approved a market-rate project in the OTSPA with residential use on the ground floor. The city cannot waive this standard for a market-rate project and then not waive it for an affordable housing project when the waiver is allowed and even mandated under state density bonus law. This is an obvious design standard that is really similar to a setback requirement. For instance, where are we putting the setback? Five feet, 10 feet, 20 feet? It's the same thing that we have here. Where are we putting this residential use? The first floor, second floor, third floor? This is allowed in the zone. Uh, this waiver must be approved under Government Code Section 65915E1, which states that "in no case may a city apply any development standard that will have the effect of physically precluding the construction of a development meeting the criteria of subdivision B at the densities permitted by this section." And that is exactly what we have here. The development standard limiting residential use to the second and third floors would physically preclude construction of the project at the density permitted under density bonus law, which, as staff previously confirmed, is 67 units. 19 residential units are located on the ground floor, and if you look at the plans that were submitted, the project cannot physically accommodate 67 units on the second and third floors, given the height limitation and the applicable setbacks. There's simply no room. Therefore, approval of this project under this subsection of density bonus law is mandated by state law. Finally, the request here could also be approved separately as a concession or incentive under Government Code Section 65915JND. A concession or incentive, incentive must be approved unless the city provides substantial evidence that the concession or incentive does not result in identifiable and actual cost reductions. The city has provided no substantial evidence, and it's really the city's burden to show this doesn't apply. Instead, applicant, the applicant submitted a letter on July 13th that provides a pro forma analysis that shows that without this concession of allowing residential on the ground floor, the project would ultimately result in a $1 million cost deficit. This is a thoughtfully designed project, and we are proud to present it to you. Uh, it would provide critical housing to those who need it. Therefore, we request that you grant the applicant's request for a density bonus waiver, grant the appeal, and approve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. Do the applicants have any other presenters?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Then I will go ahead and move on to our public comment opportunity, and we will start with Lori Kane, followed by Joe Kane. And a reminder to all those that are signing up to speak, you have three minutes.
Good evening.
Those are the rules. Thank you.
Three minutes?
That, those are the rules, yes. Thank you. Let's, let's go ahead and begin. Thank you.
Y'all done now? Thanks. My name is Lori Kane. My husband and I live in Old Town Elk Grove, near the project site. I want to thank the- And we will start with Lori Kane, followed by Joe Kane. And a reminder to all those that are signing up to speak, you have three minutes.
Good evening.
Those are the rules. Thank you. That, those are the rules, yes, thank you. Let's, let's go ahead and begin. Thank you.
Y'all done now? Thanks. My name is Lori Kane. My husband and I live in Old Town Elk Grove near the project site. I want to thank the City Council for their time and staff for the comprehensive and articulate staff report. My comments are in regards to applicant's appeal. The Planning Commission's June 2nd, 2022 decision was proper. The Planning Commission hearing was held to determine the eligibility of SB 35 ministerial review for the Oak Rose Apartments. The Planning Commission's decision is based on the project's noncompliance with city zoning standards. SB 35 allows a design review public comment oversight hearing. The Planning Commission's SB 35 denial is valid. Local government is allowed to require supportive housing to comply with written objective development standards and policies applicable to other multifamily development in the same zone under Government Code Section 65961. This project does not meet the city's objective standards of residential commercial land use and is not entitled to a waiver under Government Code Section 65915. The Planning Commission used proper compliance factors in denying SB 35 streamlined review. The project is noncompliant with objective zoning standards for commercial land use. The Planning Commission found the project ineligible for SB 35 streamlining as staff recommended. The Planning Commission is not, did not violate federal and state fair housing law. Denial of the SB 35 review process is based on compliance with objective standards. The Planning Commission considered the project with regard to the zoning code. There was no indication of who the tenants of this project would be, so a decision based on race was never a factor. The Planning Commission did not violate the applicant's due process rights. The applicant was present at the Planning Commission meeting with multiple representatives speaking. The applicant provided closing comments after public comments were heard. Based on the fact that the Oak Rose Apartment project does not meet the zoning standards for the Old Town Special Planning Area, I respectfully request the City Council to deny the development standard waiver and deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Joe Kane, followed by Jean Sadler.
Thank you. My name is Joe Kane. I'm a professional engineer in civil engineering. Early in my career, I spent seven years behind a building department counter as a plan checker, not a planner. In this capacity, I served as a member of the city's Development Review Committee. There's an adage among attorneys: If the, if the law is against you, argue the facts. If the facts are against you, argue the law. If the law and the facts are against you, blow smoke. I read the applicant's six-page appeal justification letter. Near the end of the letter, Karen Hallack of DLA Piper set the tone for today's City Council meeting, when she wrote these words about the Planning Commission meeting on June 2nd: "The commission engaged in an unfair sham process." This is a false statement. In this letter, Ms. Hallack references several sections of California Government Code and states examples of why she incorrectly asserts your hands are tied and you cannot deny the project. DLA Piper seems to assert that you, the mayor and council members, have no authority to exercise your charge and must bend to their will. Ms. Hallack's letter states, "The staff report ultimately concluded that the project is consistent with all such criteria with two alleged exceptions." This is another false statement. This paragraph cites only lighting and ground-floor residential uses, but fails to mention the project does not comply with the objective standards for quantity of residential units or for a pedestrian-oriented commercial use such as retail offices or restaurants. In the very first paragraph of the appeal letter, we find a reference to "community-serving office uses." This false statement is deliberate, as DLA Piper wants you to believe that an office used only by the occupants of the building is a pedestrian-oriented commercial use. I believe this subtle mention of the offices without any further elaboration infers that DLA Piper knows this is their weakest talking point and is by itself evidence of nonconformance and grounds for denial. To the developer, Peter Ensminger, Accelerate Housing Group and Oak Rose LCC, LLC, you might consider that you never get a second chance to make a first impression. If you want city government and the public community to support a different supportive housing project in a different location, you might consider that bullying and strong-arm tactics are not your best look and not your best position. Please stop embarrassing yourself with your poor attempt at good cop, bad cop. To the City Council, we believe the community is prepared to support a win-win-win scenario of supportive housing in an appropriate location. This could be through a public-private land swap or other creative remedy. Perhaps if the city acquired this project site, it might be better suited to a quiet public park, serving as a buffer for reading those books checked out from the future library. We respectfully, respectfully request that you accept all of the staff recommendations, to uphold the unanimous vote of the Planning Commission, and to deny the Oak Rose Apartment project on the basis of failure to comply with the objective standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Right on time. Next up, thank you. Next up is Jean Sadler, followed by Mary Popish.
My husband and I have lived here in Elk Grove for about past 40 years. And what I wanted to talk about is supportive housing. One of the requirements for a homeless person to qualify for supportive housing is that they must have at least one disabling condition. This may be, but is not limited to, chronic mental illness or disabilities regarding to drug or alcohol abuse. Hope Cooperative will be the third-party service provider who will manage the site and services. This provider will canvass homeless individuals from all of Sacramento County and find persons with one or more of the disabilities that I've just mentioned. A list will be compiled of these persons, including those from Elk Grove. However, homeless persons from Elk Grove will not be giving any preference in who is selected for Elk Rose, Oak Rose. So the end result will be that 66 homeless persons with one or more of these disabilities will be moving into Oak Rose, of which some of these may or may not be current Elk Grove residents. Elk Grove has a homeless population of approximately 120 to 150 persons, of which a lot of these are families, which would be unsuitable for a studio apartment in Oak Rose. We also have homeless persons without disabilities, which don't meet the requirements for supportive housing. So it looks like that would leave us with a lot of homeless from Sacramento County moving to Elk Grove to fill those 66 studio apartments at Oak Rose. Why not build a complex that is suitable for homeless families or for single persons who don't need supportive housing? There's plenty of homeless persons out there like this, with, with families that desperately need homes, or people that aren't disabled, but they're, they just need a home, just like everybody else. Anyway, Oak, Oak Rose is, is with supportive housing is a bad fit for this area. There's no medical, no low-cost shopping, and it's, it's just not a good fit for this area. Do you really think that this proposal is in the best interest for our city? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Mary Popish, followed by Penelope Leonard.
Hi, my name's Mary Popish. My husband Giles Popish, I believe, sent you all a letter in regards to this project. I'm here in support of this project. The reason is, we need it. I had the opportunity to talk to the navigator to find out what, what are our needs. Right now, she is having to send our people out of Elk Grove. She has a great rate of folks that she sends out. I said, okay, give me an idea of who would be eligible. Veterans who have PTSD would be eligible. Women who live on the street who have PTSD from being abused would be eligible. People who've been in accidents that may have a broken back would be eligible. And our navigator that we have here in town has been amazing. She has the highest rate of getting Elk Grove people housed, but we don't have any place here in Elk Grove, so she is having to send them out of our community. We believe this place is the right place, because it's within walking distance of great transportation. Right there on the Boulevard is the main bus route. There's a grocery store across the street. There's the pharmacy. The food bank isn't that far, and as they talked about, volunteering is a very important part of getting people back into the community, and the food bank is always looking for volunteers. And so what a wonderful way to integrate them right into an area that would allow them to get the kind of comfort and strength to be able to stay housed. A 95% success rate is unbelievable. I'm sure our school district wishes it had that kind of a success rate. And to think that they were able to do that is amazing. The city provides itself, or prides itself on being a diverse and inclusive community. We just talked about it. This means all sectors of the city must support diverse populations, such as the residents of this development. East Elk Grove and Old Town must be inclusive and welcome the project and its future residents. The project is in the right location, and I urge you to move this project forward with your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Penelope Leonard, followed by Mike Guttridge.
Oh, thanks. Hi. I'm Penelope Leonard, and my husband sent you an email. Thank you for taking us all, our opinions. I own, my husband and I own and have operated the land and the little red schoolhouse on Elk Grove Boulevard, Old Town. I am an ex-police corps worker, and I have a huge heart. But this is not appropriate for going across the street from my preschool. It's not appropriate. Right now, the trains are going to and from 22 times past Bob's Bar. People are loaded all the way past Bel Air Market, waiting to cross that railroad track all day and night. People from Elk Grove Florin can't get through. The fire department and the firemen that I've talked to are not happy about this. Whenever a person is sick and you have, I'm not reading this from my husband's script as I should, but if you have substance abuse people who have drug and alcohol and mental health problems, you're going to get telephone calls to come and get them two and three times a day. Those large fire trucks and ambulances will never make it in there or get out of there without holding up that street traffic, which has only two lanes. And it's not ever going to be widened. So that in itself should completely knock this out of the, the bag. There is probably only one reason for you to approve Oak Ridge Apartments after your staff and the Planning Commission said no. You're afraid of a lawsuit. Two, the proponent of this plan is trying to pass off a drug, alcohol, and mental health treatment center as affordable housing. HUD defines affordable housing as housing where all rent, mortgage, and utilities are less than 30% of a person's gross income. Some Oak Ridge residents will have no income. According to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, Oak Ridge is a Level 3 recovery housing. Level 3 is housing where there is a resident manager, administrative support, and recovery support services are provided. In California, this is also known as transitional housing. The law gives the city discretion to deny a building project that meets all local and state requirements. SB 35 does not give the, the city such discretion. With SB 35, the project must meet all standards before discretion is taken away. Oak Ridge does not meet all standards. Therefore, the city has discretion to deny this project.
Ms. Leonard, your time is up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have Mike Guttridge. Mike Guttridge, followed by Ben Upton.
Can you address those names?
I'd like to hear from them.
We're going to mind it. Those are true.
Next up, Mike Guttridge, then Ben Upton.
So, how's the new city manager doing? You're in the wrong city, buddy. Mike Guttridge been in a nice town for, since 1945, so I've seen a lot and done a lot and a couple of things we've done in town. But this, this situation really concerns me of what we're trying to accomplish here. I'd like to have these sent out. Somebody could give those to the, to the, the board, please, the council. You know, we've done a few projects in town and probably a lot, a lot of people have been around what we've done. But I, you, you look at this project and you think to yourself, okay, now, if I was going to build it, and then what we're talking about, would I build it next to where the library's going to be? And so, because Little Johnny and Tommy should be going to the library and so on and so forth. And so people have said, oh, well, they should, they could go over there and go into the library. You know what that's going to mean, don't you? That ain't going to work. Everybody knows it's not going to work. And so you're going to run into a situation where now the library becomes something more than a place to go in and to sit. We are going to go in and study. No, we're going to have people going in and sitting there all day, because they don't want to sit in their little one-room apartment all day. And so how's that all going to work? And then you can say the same thing about the stores. You're going to, you're going to say, okay, well, Mr. Smith, he can go over and go to Bel Air and go here and there. And then after a while, you know, guys, I've been around long enough to understand construction. So I'm saying that this, this situation is not, not going to work. Now, then we got a park down there where, where, where the Great One Spark is. And you have anybody who know who the Great One is? Mr. Strong. And so now we're going to take Mr. Strong's park, and now we're going to do what? We got a nice little park over there. Everybody been by it. It's where the kids go and so on. Now, we're going to have people sleeping out, and then all of a sudden, these units are full in this place. And so I think, well, Joe, hell, well, why don't you bring your tent and we'll go over there and put, put, put my tent in the park? Yeah, so how's that all going to work? So the whole situation, as they say, being a developer in town for many years and done a couple of things, I would say we should look maybe doing it someplace else that makes a lot more sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up, next up is Ben Upton, followed by Randy O'Rourke.
Hey, brother, you did good. Madam Mayor, it's the first time I've been before the City Council. I'm an old-timer in Elk Grove. Years ago, I sat on the advisory council. The advisory council took care of the supervisors and deciding what should be approved and so forth. And I'm a longtime resident, and Mike Guttridge is like my father. But...
You're an old man.
Their concept seems good, but it's in the bad, it's location, location, location. And I beg of you to put it in the right location. I don't mind the project. It's the location. The lady talked about the train. My wife, Sue Ellen, we live on School Street, and she cusses that train every day that she gets stopped. And everybody else, it's just blocks up from Elk Grove Florin Road. So it's just an insane idea to put that there. So I beg of you, if you want Elk Grove to love their city council and their mayor, deny this request. You want to be, you want to be loved and liked, and you all look intelligent, deny this, deny this, because it's, it's in a bad... Hey, I have... Hey, I have property on Elk Grove Florin Road, the Old Valley Painting Place. That, that property is suitable for this. It's commercial. Let them go down there and, and their idea is okay. Anyhow, thank you very much. I didn't want to raise too much hell tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Next up is Randy O'Rourke followed by Joe Madruga.
I probably don't even need these microphones. I speak loud enough as it is, all right? Been in Elk Grove, Old Town Elk Grove, Waterman Meadows since 90, okay? My kids went to school at Elk Grove High School. They all graduated and we all had good times there, baseball, football, a lot of good stuff. We believe in Old Town so much that we bought the old Mercantile Building, the two-story building there right next to the railroad tracks, thinking this is a great spot, okay? And then we get this proposal here, okay? And this SB 35, I kind of checked into it a little bit and this, I hate to say it, but this is your fault, okay? You guys did not manage the city properly, okay? If you did, we wouldn't have this problem, okay? The state wouldn't be able to do these type of things. So I'm not trying to slap your hand, but I'm just kind of calling it the way it is, okay? I think the planning commission felt the same way when I told them, the same thing. We need to keep good management on these affordable housing. Everybody's right. Great project, wrong location, okay? We got hundreds of kids that go to Kerr, to go to the schools, go to the high schools, and they do not need to be walking in front of this facility. Whoops. Okay? We got a library. We've got a daycare. All of these things have been there and have worked harmoniously together and then we're going to put this project? All I'm asking you guys is to do what's right for your employers and that's these people here, okay? These people, all right? I'm not, I'm not, I'm just speaking for them and me, you know, but that's okay. So please deny this request, find another location. If you need somebody to go find a location, I do have my broker's license and I'd be more than willing to help them find another location. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Joe Madruga followed by Jackie Perez.
My name is Joe Madruga. My wife Dee and I have lived in Elk Grove since the fall of '74. In 1998, we decided to invest at Old Town Elk Grove and bought the house next to the vacant lot we are talking about. It wasn't vacant then, it had a home and family who lived there. We bought the house and rented it to our daughter who works there designing wedding flower arrangements. We are concerned about the personal safety of our daughter, the preschool across the street, and children walking to and from school. We don't want anyone to be at risk due to an apartment house for homeless made up primarily of male individuals with mental and/or behavioral problems. We are also concerned that this proposal is aimed at taking advantage of Senate Bill 35, which was passed by the California Legislature in their 2017, 2018 session. This bill was designed to cut corners in the planning and approval process so that projects like this could be more easily approved. This bill most of the safe, this bill bypasses most of the safeguards the City of Elk Grove puts in place to weed out quickly proposals like this one. Shockingly, it provides for ministerial approval rather than by the planning commission or the city council. Please allow me to insert this definition taken from the guidelines published by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Section 102 N. Definitions. Ministerial processing or ministerial approval means a process that developmental, development approval involving little or no personal judgment by the public official as to the wisdom or manner of carrying out this project. The public official merely ensures that this proposed development meets all the objective standards, objective subdivision standards, and objective design review standards. In effect, at the time that the application is submitted to the local government, but uses no special discretion or judgment in reaching a decision, close quotes. In a nutshell, there is no oversight allowed by the planning commission or the city council. As it stands, the State of California is dictating low housing standards for most of California counties and cities. It seems hypocritical for the state to not allow personal judgment by the local state, by the local planning commission, but is implementing the political judgment of the state legislature. However, when the public looks at it, they only see what you have approved, not what a minister has approved. Under the circumstances, we feel you should hold the planning commission finding and not approve this project.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Jackie Perez followed by Dee Madruga.
We've done this a few times, so I keep feeling like I don't really have a lot to say. But that's my dad and that's our business, my business, and I take a lot of pride in that place. And I get a lot of letters from Elk Grove citizens saying how cute it is and how nice it is to see that somebody cares. I've gone to a lot of planning meetings for the city and people talk about they want Elk Grove to be like a walk-in community. They want people to feel comfortable and safe and, and be able to walk to and from wherever they're going. I watch so many children and senior citizens walk past my shop every day. There's a couple 80-year-old women that go to Starbucks and to the, one of the stores because they come back with bags. I've seen like an 80-something-year-old man on a three-wheeler, a lot of young kids and they're, it's just, they're trying to, they're trying to make Elk Grove nicer and then they're going to do this. And I just, I have two girls that work with me that have a brother and a dad that are both mentally ill from drugs. And they said they would not feel safe working for me anymore if this happens. I have another girl that I just recently started having work for me and she said her little brother goes to that park that they were talking about earlier and that her parents will not feel, they will not feel comfortable letting her, him ride his bike over there by himself if this passes. Every Tuesday at 3:30 in the morning, I go to the donut shop on my way to San Francisco to get flowers. I've spoken to the lady that owns JR's in Elk Grove and she said that it's getting worse. They're starting fires in their trash cans. They're loitering and she said that they're very aggressive and they scare them, basically. You know, I've talked to lots of people. I've talked to business owners, my parents, and like six other people were the ones that started passing out all the flyers because we went to the original meeting. And a lot of the business owners tell me the same thing, that people try to break into their storage units and they're just aggressive and, and, and not, not as the way they're, they're trying to say they're going to be. And I just, I'm not comfortable with this project and I just trying to see if there is something else. I think that's it. I'm just not, I don't feel safe. And I feel like there's a lot of business owners that are probably going to want to close. And if you guys are trying to make things better, this is not a good place to put it.
Thank you. Dee Madruga followed by William Myers.
Most of what I wanted to say, my daughter and my husband already filled in on that. But I would just like to say that this property that we own, when we bought it, we were very happy. She was happy to have a place to put her flowers together and have her consultations for her weddings. She's been 24 years there and has been very, very happy. And like she said, people come and go. We've had so many people say they loved the little house, they wanted to see what it looked like inside, but they, they don't because we don't have, she doesn't have walk, excuse me, walk-in traffic. But she is very concerned about her safety there. If you can imagine a three-story building with windows with primarily men looking out those windows all day long and she goes in and out of her shop to her coal box, putting in flowers, taking out flowers all day and in the evenings, and it's very unsafe for her as a female being next door to possibly 60 men. And we can't imagine being a little over a single driveway distance from a three-story building. That when she looks out her kitchen window, all she sees is a building and windows and eyes looking at her all day long, on into the evening. We very much would like to have you turn this project down. It isn't in the right place. Our home is a cute little, small, two-bedroom place next to a three-story building. It just doesn't make any sense. There are other places that could work for these people. The homeless, yes. We have a son that was homeless, sleeping wherever he wanted to sleep. He's now clean and he did it on his own, but I know people can't do it on their own sometimes and they need a place to go. But this is not the right place for that building and I would ask that you turn it down, please. Thank you.
Thank you. William Myers followed by Lynn Wheat.
Madam Mayor, council members, just a quick fact. I looked at this, very studied, much studied. There is no association between permanent supportive housing and rights and crime. They have no effect on it. People have asked, that's just, that's just an unsequitur, so you can just, just know that the science has been done on it. But my question is, are we really phrasing this the right way? Are we framing this discussion in the right way? I appreciate the things coming up here. Almost 50 years I've lived here and I, when I came here, I got to know some of the people who gave us our wonderful reputation in Elk Grove. One of them was that we are the first place in California that took a county library away out of the city and put it out for the people. That was Elk Grove. And I met somebody who was part of that. Another thing we're famous for, Project Ride. What's Project Ride? A community coming together led in this case by a marvelously compassionate person who also got to know, who looked at our disabled and asked, how do we heal them? This is a place where we brought the intellect out to the people and then we reached out to the disabled and with our hands and our hearts, and we still do, okay? My daughter worked on her sources and now she's their accountant. You know, we bring these people in. Look what we have now, a library next to a facility to reach out and help the disabled. I looked at that and this is a good facility and it's a good program and this program has a lot of success all over the place. So why aren't we proud of it? Why don't we stand up and say, what a great combination? Now, I have lived where libraries actually reach out to the disabled and to the poor and do wonderful things with them. There we are. Where's our chance? Why don't we respond to the best in ourselves and to the best of our tradition? Do we take pride in that? Last point. In January of 2020, the council, council adopted a charter for compassion, okay? And it sets out very clearly what the kinds of things are we should be looking to. And I would just like to ask you, doesn't this project really be one of those things that should demand at least some consideration through the lens of compassion that we have devoted ourselves to? I thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Lynn Wheat followed by Alan Vito III.
First, I want to say if you're uncomfortable going against staff recommendation, it has been done by previous councils. And I can give two examples, Sterling Meadows and the Catholic Church. Second, we, you as a city, you as our leaders, have indeed changed plans for other developers to meet what you believed was a need and against popular demand to not do that. One of them was the sign ordinance. There were, the room was filled with people opposed, residents opposed to the changing of a sign ordinance. And the will of the council was to do that. Now, I agree that this Rose project probably isn't consistent with the Old Town plan. However, I disagree that there's not a possibility of having it where it should be. I suggest that you as a city council delay the appeal and practice amending this parcel to meet the requirements for this project. That can be done. And I want to close with, and I would like the audience to respect me because to me, I am very sad today. I live in Elk Grove because I love the people and the Delta Breeze and I enjoy the diversity. But what I see happening really concerns me. We may be diverse, but we are economically segregated. And I see it happening when we look to pill all of our affording, affordable housing complexes, big units, big units along Bruceville Road because nobody wants something in their backyard. Well, for those behind me, I would like it in my backyard. I have supported and fought for better affordable housing, for elevators in our three-story affordable housing units so families with young kids wouldn't have to be climbing three floors of stairs with groceries and car seats. I have, I have fought for a sidewalk along Waterman so the people that live in the Waterman complex, the parents, the young parents that are pushing their kids in strollers would have a sidewalk to walk on. I'm tired of us being nimby's when you adopted an ordinance saying we're a city of compassion. I know there are members in our community that are compassionate. We got to quit responding out of fear and move forward. I would like to see real leadership that touches everyone in our community, not just of a certain income level or the ability to come forth and speak here. Thank you.
Next up is Alan Vito III followed by Alan Vito Jr.
Hello, my name is Alan Vito. For those of you who don't know me, my family has owned and operated Bob's Club in Old Town Elk Grove for nearly 30 years. My time spent in Elk Grove City Council chambers is minimal at best. However, my time spent in Old Town Elk Grove is a different story. Mornings, days, evenings, it doesn't matter, I've had the honor to work in Old Town scrubbing toilets, spraying down parking lots, pouring drinks, and just being a part of the community. My father, his name is Alan as well, he's devoted his life to our family business and now I'm devoting mine and plan on doing so for many years to come, hopefully. I am truly invested in Old Town. I just took a huge leap of faith personally and purchased my first home right in Old Town, even with how crazy the market has been. It took everything I had to pull that deal off. All of my money, my time, my family, my soul is all there in Old Town Elk Grove. This project not only goes against the Old Town SBA, but it will bring individuals with histories of mental disorders and substance abuse to my family's business's doorstep. We serve alcohol and Old Town is known for being the nightlife entertainment district of Elk Grove. I fear for my safety, my staff's safety, and the safety of the homeless individuals and the safety of my fellow community members. The CEO of Accelerate Housing Group made her intentions seem innocent with her sweet story of how this all originated. The applicants hide behind state laws, Senate bills, and look down on all of us from their moral high grounds. moral high grounds, but I hope that they can see now what they are proposing is wrong for Old Town, it's wrong for the individuals they claim to care about, and just plain wrong altogether. If the applicants truly believe that what they are doing is right, then why did they hide in the council chambers until their person outside texted them that the parking lot was clear of concerned citizens after the planning commission hearing? Insinuating that we, the citizens of Old Town, are so barbaric that they can't have a civilized conversation with us after the council meeting? If you truly believe you are doing what's right, then speak with us outside the chambers and win us over instead of ignoring us. Let me tell you that the citizens of Elk Grove are welcoming to all walks of life. We inspire diversity, community, and kindness. That is why it is such a beautiful place to live. That is why you want to put this facility here. And that is why Accelerate Housing Group, I hope we can work together and we can just find a better area to get this place further from establishments to serve alcohol and better serve our homeless community, because they are citizens of our community too, and we do need to help them. But that is all I need to say.
Thank you. Next up, Alan Vito Jr., followed by Alexandria Albers.
My name's Alan Vito, and each and every one of you I know, and I can't believe I'm here. It's been a long day. I've been on the roof of my house, I won't get into it. So you guys have heard by everybody in here, from senior citizens like myself and Mr. Upton and Mr. Guthridge, to the young, to everybody, man, you've heard it. And I think we've got some people that are really compassionate and loving people, and my heart goes out to you. You're great, and maybe you should invite some of them people to your home and let them stay there. I really believe that in Old Town Elk Grove, that what we've been trying to do, at least me for the last thirty years, I've been working on running that out of my business, right? I've been in a million fights in my bar over people that ain't got no home, that their parents don't want them at their house because they're doing drugs and doing negativity. So they kick them out, so now they're walking around, going wherever, and they want to come hang out at my bar, and I got to deal with it. It's just crazy. And like they say about the police being able to get in, hey, they do a pretty good job, but fire, man, they come in and they do their retirement parties in my bar. When the fire department comes in, they all talk about how sorry it is for them to get through Elk Grove. So me, I believe, I don't know all the, these guys were great. They're so smart and come up here with their educational views, and I love it. I'm not that guy. I'm the guy that, like my kid says, I'm a shitter cleaner, and I serve cocktails and I look out for my community. And I just don't really think this is a good thing for Elk Grove at all. If it's a program that you have set up to inspire the homeless and inspire the drug people with something new that's going to work, not something that's been, you guys been, you've been doing it for forty-one years, the company you're with? Come on, man. That's crazy, and where we're at right now, I just cannot believe it. It's not who I would invest with. It's just not me. I would not put my money with them. So again, I'm going to leave. I trust in each and every one of you people. I've got to know you, meeting the police chief that we have of Elk Grove, Bobby, everybody has been so kind to me, and I entrust in you guys that you're going to do what's right and what's best for Elk Grove, and not only just Old Town and our situation, but all of Elk Grove, and I really trust in you. And her, I've never met you before, but man, you run a beautiful school. It's always clean. It's always, I've been going by it for thirty years. It's just beautiful, and you're going to put something like that across from that? It just makes no sense at all. No sense at all. It don't make no sense at all. It's wrong. It's not right. So that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you, Mr. Vito. Next up is Alexandria Albers, followed by Kendra Lewis.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alexandria. I'm twenty-six, and I'm a recent resident of Elk Grove. I've been here for about two years. In this time, I have seen our homeless community grow, and the people experiencing homelessness in the communities that they build are part of our Elk Grove community, and we need to support each other and to provide supportive services to uplift this community, just like we would for any other demographic. The Rose apartment development is a great location for success of the people who are trying to get their lives back on track. It will bring about sixty-seven, I believe I said, a permanent supportive housing, and it encourages community engagement and has establishments to support this project. Our homeless population relies on access, and the apartment is across the street from a pharmacy. It has food, healthy food options. We are not in a food desert here in Elk Grove, and I'm very happy for that. And it's next to public transportation, a bus stop that goes to the Community College and the Blue Line into Sacramento, both encouraging job skills, opportunity, and higher education. The service provider Hope Cooperative has been providing mental health services for forty-one years in Sacramento County. I see that is impressive, seeing how much our homeless community has grown throughout this time. This project and agency will bring dedicated, long-term affordability and wraparound case management to folks that need to maintain their housing and stabilize their lives. We know that homelessness is on the rise in Elk Grove, just like it is in the rest of the county, and we should be welcoming this resource, because we need, oops, because we need this kind of housing in Elk Grove more now than ever. I have been homeless. I have seen my friends homeless. I know what it is like firsthand to rely on public accessible resources and transportation. The unhoused community is part of my community, part of Elk Grove's community, and we need to be better. You have the opportunity to show compassion, provide life-changing support and services, and Elk Grove should aspire to be a leader on how California can handle homelessness, starting by prioritizing affordable housing for people who are experiencing homelessness and mental health problems. Show me that this is a city who cares about their community. Only homes can end homelessness, and the city should help in whatever way they can to get this project built. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to our other projects.
Thank you. Kendra Lewis, and followed by Brandy Bolosko. And that is the last speaker I have signed up, so if anyone plans to speak, please submit your slips.
Good evening. Good to be here. I actually was going to start with just kind of my active membership in Elk Grove since ninety-seven, but I want to start with a story, because tonight what I'm hearing is people are concerned about where this project is and who's going to be there. And I think what's important to understand about homelessness is, a lot of people are homeless just because they cannot afford market-rate housing. Everybody at a certain age in their life who's not working is at some point going to be on a savings or disability or social security. And speaking as the executive director of the Sacramento Housing Alliance and someone who's lived in Elk Grove, whose children went K-12 through Elk Grove, whose husband is a retired Elk Grove police officer, I come here knowing that Elk Grove has a big heart, and I hope we will be respectful for people who are speaking. What I'd like to say is, just recently, when you think you have seen it, I would like to tell the story of a woman, a phone call we received at my organization for a woman who was homeless living in her car. And we asked every question there is manageable about what's going on here and why. We don't do direct services. That's not what I'm here for. But this woman was homeless because her husband passed away. Pandemic. She is on social security, and she had stage four cancer. And she started living in her car because she had nowhere else to go. We knew where she was parked, and so there was high concern of her ability to survive. And so it took several of us to try to get her off the street. We got her motel housing vouchers just to get her out of the car and off the street, but the issue of her homelessness is, until she got permanent affordable housing or some sort of housing, she could not get the treatment or the surgery she needed to remove the cancer. So there are many, many people on these streets that are going through things that are not necessarily drug addicts or mentally ill. There are poor people who are struggling, and we have been impacted by a region, and Elk Grove is a city that is one of them, with high rents and a lot of, everybody cannot afford an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar house. Most of us in this room can't. And so I'm here today for you to highly consider this project because it is needed. The region is impacted, but Elk Grove does need to get its citizens off the streets, and this is an opportunity to do so. Hope Cooperative is the best of the best. I've seen their programs in Folsom, there around the region, and my organization has worked with the city of Elk Grove for the housing element, and everybody in this room has had the opportunity to make comment on the general plan and the housing element for the next ten years in this region. These things are not secrets. They are not hidden. There are things that we as a community need to work together and do better about. I am concerned, I am aware of the concerns, and I hope that we can do better together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Brandy Bolosko.
Good evening. I don't have anything written down, but I feel like I'm really affected by this because I'm at ninety-two fifty-three, which is directly across from where this is going. I own a hair salon. I was closed three times during COVID, have busted my butt to save my salon. To turn around now and have my employees threaten to quit if this happens, which I've worked my whole life as a single mother at seventeen, saved every penny I had to open my business, fought for my business through COVID, escaped domestic violence myself, nobody helped me. Nobody helped me. My seven, my son, now that's thirty-one, is a detective. He escaped that situation with me. He's a detective for San Diego PD, and what I'm saying is, nobody helped me. I worked, I worked ten, twelve, I still, as a business owner, work ten, twelve-hour days. I'm going to be affected because I'm in charge of seven women employees. We look outside before we even leave. We're sometimes not feeling safe now, and now we have men that are going to be across the street, and what's that going to look like for seven women? Who's going to protect us coming out to our cars or dealing with this situation? And those are my concerns for me being directly across the street. I've talked to our customers, how do you feel about this? I'm sure we'll lose tons of customers that are scared to come because of the unknown of what this project is going to bring. And I give to the homeless every day. Every day I try to help. I am a very giving person. Anytime I could give to help anybody, and that's why I'm saying I think I'm blessed in that part of life where I know to give to the people that need help. But who's going to help us in this situation is what I'm asking the city. I think it's a great, like everyone has said, we think it's a great project, but not for across to hair salon where there's seven women by ourselves with no protection, next to a bar where it could be setting these men up for failure, next to a childcare where who's going to protect them? I mean, we need, we need protection. We know that we're understaffed in the police department. We, I deal with the police coming out in that area all the time. So we're not saying for this to not go through, but not in this area. And we are trying so hard to clean up our little area to make it presentable for the city. We finally have gotten fences taken down and things like that, where our landlords are really trying hard to make it look really nice. So I just think it's not the place for this business to go.
Thank you for your comments. All right, that concludes our public comments, so I will close the public comment opportunity and invite the applicant back up to speak, if you wish.
No, we don't have anything further to say unless you have specific questions for us.
All right. Well, I will, that remains to be seen, so we'll see. So then at this time, I will go ahead and declare that the public hearing is now closed and open it up for council deliberations and direction. Mr. Hobbs, do you want to provide any clarifying remarks before we begin?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So let me just kind of focus the council on the legal issue that you're being asked to decide. Under SB thirty-five, as you've heard from our staff, the standard is whether or not the project complies with the city's objective standards, and there seems to be no dispute that it doesn't, because the project proposes to put residential uses on the commercial, or excuse me, residential uses on the ground floor, which conflicts with the Old Town SBA, which leads to the request by the applicant for a waiver of a development standard. And you've heard from the applicant's attorney why they feel that the waiver of the development standard is proper. I respectfully disagree with that approach. When you look at the statute that governs the development standard waiver, it includes matters such as site and construction conditions. And then it includes the phrase that you've heard from the applicant's attorney, including but not limited to, which is fairly typical language you'll see in statutes. But the problem with lumping in the land use provisions under that statute is, when you look at the types of standards that can be waived, it has matters such as height restrictions, setback restrictions, floor area restrictions, and it's a basic tenet of statutory construction that when you look at specific terms in the statute and determine whether or not the general terms apply as well, you look, you read the general terms as limited by the specific terms. And it's a Latin phrase that essentially means of the same kind. There's a Latin term for that under the law. And so when you have general language such as including but not limited to, and then a number of specific items, the including but not limited to has to be considered in terms of the types of limited specific items. And the reason this is important in terms of land use is because cities, general law cities such as Elk Grove, have historic and constitutionally endowed land use powers. It's right in the Constitution, the police powers, a very strongly supported provision of state constitutional law, that cities have land use authority. The legislature has declared by statute, Government Code Section six-five-eight-zero-zero, that its intent is to minimally regulate local zoning to the extent necessary or proper in the eyes of the legislature. And with the city's police powers, the historic and constitutional police powers, which are found in California Constitution, Article eleven, Section seven, and as embodied by a number of cases, one Supreme Court case of note is Big Creek Lumber versus County of Santa Cruz. It's a two thousand and six case. The site is thirty-eight Cal IV, eleven thirty-nine, and that, among other cases, illustrates the principle of the broad constitutional land use authority of cities. Now, the legislature can preempt that. They have the authority to preempt that, but when they do that, they need to speak with clarity and precision as to what's being preempted. And when I read the definition of development standards here, I don't see that it would preempt land use authority, your residential, your commercial. Now, perhaps it can deal with things like setbacks, height restrictions, but that's not what's being requested here. What is being requested is a deviation from the fundamental land use authority, the zoning of the city. And I don't read the development standard to apply, the definition of development standard to apply here to provide for that waiver. So as a matter of statutory construction and state law, it's just not available. Now, we heard tonight that there was a suggestion that the relief from the zoning code provisions could be provided under a different section of the statute. It's Government Code six-five-nine-one-five-D, as in dog one. That statute, as explained in your staff report, deals with a different provision called concessions and incentives. What that provision says is that you can be relieved as an applicant from certain land use provisions under, as a concession or incentive, but if you ask for that, the city is entitled to ask for your cost savings to determine whether or not it's appropriate, whether or not there's cost savings as a result of this. And staff frankly misunderstood that to be the request of the applicant early on, and then later in late May, I received an email from the applicant's attorney telling me that the city is misunderstanding the request. The applicant is not seeking a concession or incentive, rather they are seeking a waiver. And so the city staff, myself included, went down that path and analyzed this as a waiver. So the applicant has abandoned this notion of a concession or incentive. It's just not, just not something that they're asking for. And you'll see that also in their letter of July thirteenth, where they do, they And you'll see that also in their letter of July 13th, where they make it clear that they are not asking for an incentive or concession because they didn't want to provide us cost analyses. But that very letter also indicates that there will be a cost savings of not having residential on the ground floor of about $2 million. Now, to be fair, the letter goes on to say, but if we don't put residential on the ground floor, the feasibility of the project doesn't work because we won't be able to manage the project in a financially feasible way. But the problem with that approach is the courts have said that cost savings for the construction and project feasibility are two different things. And so when we look at cost savings with respect to, in the context of, say, a concession or an incentive, we look to see whether or not there will be construction savings. So there's evidence in the record that there actually will not be construction savings, cost savings, if the concession is granted. But none of that matters because the applicant is not requesting a concession. They've abandoned that approach. So it brings us back full circle to the notion of a development standard waiver. And for the reasons that I've just explained, under state law, it simply does not authorize the waiver of fundamental land use, your residential, your commercial. Now, you've heard from the applicant that, well, that's not really land use. That is a development standard because it's saying where your types of use are going to be. And that's right. It is saying where the types of use are going to be. Residential needs to be on the second and third floor. That's part of your zoning code. Commercial needs to be on the ground floor. That's part of your zoning code. You've also heard from the applicant's representative about how there was another project, a market rate project that was approved, that had commercial on the ground floor for the front-facing units, and there were some residential in the back. They didn't necessarily have that. However, those are really apples and oranges when you look at the types of different projects. That project was a traditional design review project where the planning commission is authorized and the city council, if it gets to you, has discretion. Now, if this applicant wants to apply through a traditional land use process, that's fine. They could do that. They would be subject to SEQA. The planning commission would have more discretion over the design, the location. There's a lot more latitude. This applicant has chosen to follow the SB 35 process. So that brings it to your charge to strictly look at the objective standards. It applies equally to us, to them. I think I heard tonight that the applicant's representative says that this project meets the, I wrote it down, the intent and spirit of the SBA. Well, the intent and spirit is not what we're looking at when we look at objective standards. Does it comply or doesn't it? And I think everyone, including the applicant, would acknowledge this does not meet the objective standards for the ground floor commercial. So the only way, yeah, ground floor commercial, the only way you get to an approval is if you grant the waiver. And for the reasons I've said, it just isn't eligible and available under state law. And so staff recommendation remains to deny the project simply because it doesn't comply with the objective standards and the waiver is not available for this project. Happy to answer any further questions for you.
Thank you for those clarifying questions. We will start with, we'll start with Councilmember Hume, since the proposal is in your district.
Whatever justification you need to use, that's all right. I'll take the hot seat. Listen, I want to begin, I'll try and keep my minutes, or my comments is close to three minutes, just out of equity, but I doubt I'll be able to do that. But I'd like to begin just by saying that I trust that everyone in this room is a good person. Perhaps with the accession of the two people I know to be attorneys, but those are occupational hazards. So, look, nobody is setting out to be mean, to be uncompassionate. The Joseph de la Cruces of the world need a second chance too. Okay? There are a lot of misconceptions about what homelessness is and what homelessness isn't. And let me start by saying that homelessness is not an issue to be solved. Homelessness is a group of people who are living in unfortunate circumstances. The reasons for which got them there are as varied as the paths that they have to get out of there. And to not recognize that and not recognize that one of the basic human needs, there are three, this last time I checked, and that's food, water, and shelter. And to be without any of those can be fatal, but to be without even for a short time is certainly stressful. Okay? So I want to start by saying to Dana and to Erin, the work that you do is honorable. The goals that you set out in front of you are laudable. And I just appreciate what you've dedicated your lives to try and leave your impact on this crazy rock. So let me start there. And Mr. O'Rourke, you blamed city management, saying that we, I don't know, yeah, there he is. How could I miss you? You're the tallest guy in the room. You blamed our management as getting us into this mess. And that's kind of true, but it's kind of not true. And the reason being is that Housing and Community Development, which is the state, establishes the regional housing needs allocation numbers. They say this is how many units you need to build in these income categories. Then the local jurisdiction monitors how we do, and we do approve housing developments, but we do not necessarily prioritize a particular housing over another housing. It's whatever, whoever comes with a project and builds that, proposes to do that, that's what gets done. And the market absorbs what the market absorbs. So then, when we fall short, and I would defy anyone to find a community that is meeting their RENA numbers in the low and very low income category, when the local jurisdiction falls short of meeting that bar that is set by that state agency, now all of a sudden, under SB 35, the state comes in and takes away local discretion and say, well, you guys had a chance to do what we wanted you to do, and you didn't do it, so now we're going to tell you what you are going to do. And so had this project come forward under the normal review process that the city attorney just mentioned, I would have been happy to work with the applicant to try and address some of the concerns that have been raised relative to density. That the density monus makes this one acre in Old Town the most densely developed parcel in all of Elk Grove. I would have been happy to work on the design, which is a beautiful design, but it's not necessarily fitting in the Old Town area. I would have been happy to work on the parking standards that could have got this to where it would have been reasonable to assume that these residents might have cars and need a place to park. Any number of things that we could have worked on. However, there is an old saying that when you live by the sword, you die by the sword. And by trying to come in under the cover of SB 35 and what you are allowed to do, what you are permitted to do, what the law says you can do, and tell us that that is what we have to accept, then the only thing we can look to are those standards that are objective and can allow us to stand up for our community. And so the reason that the ground floor commercial provision exists within the Old Town SBA is because we have invested a lot of blood, sweat, and tears over the years, many of the people in this room, to try and get a viable, vibrant downtown area that is, that has a pedestrian walkability. And so that's, it's not just words on paper that should be overlooked because the state tells us that they ought to be. And so I've said to you privately, I know that the city staff has approached you prior to any of these hearings. We have other parcels, some of which under city control, that we would love to partner with you to try and make this project work. We do recognize the need. But unfortunately, the only thread of the sweater that I can pull on under SB 35 is the objectional standard, and this project does not meet it. And so I uphold the.
Vice Mayor, soon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to build off Councilmember Hume's comments. You know, I too appreciate everybody coming out here tonight and their sentiments. Dana and Erin, we had the opportunity to tour your facility and learn about your work. I learned a lot that day, and I've been learning a lot, you know, since my tenure here on the council, and I'll get to that in a minute. But please know, these are not empty words from what Councilmember Hume is saying. This council, I believe, in my sentiment, and as well as Councilmember Hume's, from you just heard from, we strongly believe in being compassionate and caring. We believe that the people here care about the underserved. And so we're not attacking those, that at all. My personal frustration with SB 35, and I'm going to disagree with the gentleman in the back as well, is that we've done our part as much as we can to build affordable housing. There is no city in the region, the six-county, 22-city region, that is meeting their very low and low income. You know, we've gone through, I serve on the agency that does that, those numbers. So we know that the region's challenged, thus SB 35. But what SB 35 does, it took away our right, what we know as representatives, what the community knows is good for the community, and being able to participate in the conversation, just as Councilmember Hume mentioned, under SB 35, you know, that is very limited or taken away. SB 35 is not, you know, carte blanche to, in my opinion, is not carte blanche to just, you know, just come in and totally disregard existing land use authority, which I concur with our legal, our council, that this is a land use issue. And it's nuanced, and to some, I hear, you know, maybe to them, it doesn't mean that much, but it does. It does mean something. And so unfortunately, under SB 35, that's not something I can support. But I do want to say to all of us here in this room, we've got to come together as a community to address this issue. And I heard people talk about the fearfulness they have now, today, with no project there. That means the individuals that you're afraid of are in the street right now. So by not wanting a project close by, you're saying the people that you are afraid of, for them, it's okay for them to be out there. And so we've heard it throughout the community. We're not the only council to deal with this. All of you know this is a statewide, nationwide issue. We have to come together, community, to face things, the facts that the solutions aren't going to be something that's tucked away, nowhere where you don't see it. The things about being next to schools and shopping, when the financing for these projects go through, that's exactly the things that they're asked to list. Are they close to shopping? Are they close to transit? Are they close to the very things that all of you enjoy? And so by just pure financing, it will be somewhere. If it's not in Old Town, it will be in any of our neighborhoods. And just a year ago, because many of, this is in Councilmember Hume's district, you may not be aware, just a year ago, there was a similar project that was proposed over on the west side of town. And it was deja vu for me because we had our, we were doing virtual back then, but we had our own virtual meetings. It wasn't in Bob's Bar, but it was in, it was online. And talking to folks about SB 35, about affordable housing. My point being is that by saying it's not right in this location, recognize it will be somewhere close to you. We have no choice. This is a growing crisis, and we need to get ahead of it. And we don't do it alone. As Councilmember Hume mentioned, this is a partnership. Developers come in and build these things. They obtain financing, and those financiers need those things. They need to be close to those amenities that I talked about. So this is something that we're going to have to learn to accept. And so I appreciate, again, the concerns, and I support the staff's recommendation in that this land use issue is an objective policy that this project does not meet. But please understand, it will meet it somewhere, and that chances are, it could be in any of our backyards. Now, I want to touch quickly on, you know, the learning experience I mentioned to you. You know, before touring Dana and Erin's project, I remember when I first got on council, and there was a transitional housing project, and you may have heard of it or remember it. It was called the Grace House. And it was a transitional housing project. It was a house that the city revamped in the neighborhood, right? And in partnership with Secmo's, I forget the acronym now. Thank you. Self-help housing puts individuals and families into these houses in your neighborhood. Your next-door neighbor's house could be that house. And people were very concerned about it. And the thing is, with my surprise, there wasn't a single call from our police department about disturbances in these neighborhoods, that these houses were existing in our residential neighborhoods, unbeknownst to us. Now, we not only have one, but two, not two, but three now in the city. And one of them was in my district on the west side. And when that third one came, and again, I've seen the two, and I know the record from, you know, talking to staff, when that third one came, this room was filled like this with residents from my district, telling me, telling us it was the wrong location, how bad it was. My point being, and since then, it's been built, and it's running fine. Still no problems. My point being is that we all have, you know, these perceptions. And I've had mine reset, you know, through touring these facilities, talking to individuals, going to our winter, you know, shelter and talking to individuals that are suffering from this. And so I've had some things reset and learned about what these projects are. We heard that these are not homeless shelters. So I hope you will take it upon yourself. And in fact, I know Sarah, you know, she does a great job in our city. I know she talked about the tour, and I want to talk about, with our council later on, about let's do something for the city where we allow the public or organize the public to, if you're willing, come out and tour one of these. Because the, my opinion, again, we need to come together as a community, get educated on this in its entirety, and then let's figure out how we can work together to put these types of things in place that will have services, that will get these people the help they need, and really get the people that are homeless in our community off the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Spies.
So I want to thank everybody for coming here tonight. I was thinking of, you know, all kinds of clever things to say, but I'm going to leave those alone. A couple of things that I did want to mention, you know, I will align myself, of course, with my cohorts here on the dais thus far. When I first had an opportunity to meet with the applicants, the last thing I told them was to please consider the alternatives. The city of Elk Grove, I believe all of us here are compassionate. What we're telling you is that there's a better place to be. We've offered you a better place to be, and I please hope that you consider that. Because we do recognize that there is a problem here, and we are trying to solve it, and we are committed to it. To say or to believe that we don't have compassion is frankly insulting. Now, so with that, though, I appreciate the applause because next, you know, I was not going to say one of these clever quotes, but they said something about politics. If you join politics, looking for friends, you're in the wrong place. If you want friends, buy a dog, right? So I do have a bit of admonishment, and I hope you'll take this as I mean it. There is a lady tonight that I think we showed a little bit less than respect that we should have. And that's a lady named Ms. Lynn Wheat. I don't know if she's still in here. Unfortunately, I need glasses to see that far away. Ms. Wheat has been to far more planning commissions, city councils, workshops, every time speaking truth to power. She's been fighting for you, whether you know it or not. So what I'm going to ask you, please, as you leave tonight, please stay engaged in the community government. Because we need you here, we want you here. Please don't make this the last time you come here. Even if it's to come here and tell us we're doing our job poorly. That's what this is about. So I appreciate you, and I appreciate you coming out. So with all that, I hope you accept the admonishment as I mean it, just that, you know, Ms. Wheat deserves far more than a little bit of respect. So getting back straight to it, it does not meet the objective criteria of the Old Town special planning area. I don't support a request for the developmental standard waiver. I accept staff recommendation to deny the appeal.
Councilmember Winn.
Thank you. I will, I'll keep this short. Councilmember Spies says, please stay involved. That doesn't mean come to every single meeting and speak. Because we still have five other items to argue. I'm going to be lucky if we get out before 1:00 AM. But I do want to thank you all for coming out, and especially to Ms. Erin Johansson and Dana Trigila. The work that you do is tough. It is really tough. I know that. I know that because I do the same work every day. I provide direct services to low-income families, to families that are struggling, to individuals experiencing homelessness. And Councilmember Hume is correct when he said there is this misconception about folks that come from affordable housing or homelessness. And I have to tell you that I came from that. or homelessness. And I have to tell you that I came from that background. But and you heard Alan Vito talk about how he's worked with individuals as well that's come in his bar. And I think Ms. Dee also talked about her son that was homeless as well. We're not all bad people. We need help. We need resources. We need services. We need the wraparound services. And that's what the county is there for. That's what some of these nonprofits are there for. That's what I do every day. But as somebody that governs this city here, I have to go back to, we have standards for reasons. We put criterias in place for a reason. And unfortunately, this project does not meet the standard or the criterion. So I will take the staff's recommendation and deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to thank my colleagues. Powerful words. I respect all of you and what you brought to the table. Because what you see here is compassion. It is compassion. Being homeless is not a crime. Being poor is not a crime. I'm an immigrant to this country. We've seen all kinds of hardships. My mother working two jobs to put my brother and I through school, just so that we can achieve that American dream. And it's there for all of us. You know, we have, unfortunately, we really have one question for us this evening, and I'll get to that answer. But to Dana and to Erin, I share your values. I think you are doing amazing work. I have spoken to so many in the region that are your big champions and supporters. I know what you bring to the table. And it is my hope that we will partner, that we will be partners in this journey. Because every city in our region has a responsibility to step up and to step up to help our unhomed population who go through so many different issues, like Joseph De La Cruz. For him to come here and share his story. There are so many others. I talk to our unhomed in my daily life when I'm working, when I go downtown, when I'm around the community. They don't scare me. They're human beings that have had a series of bad luck, bad decisions. If you were to take inventory, you'll hear so many, so many stories. A lot of ours, of course, have a connection to the city of Elk Grove. Sometimes they're little children. When I was on the school board, I met so many of them. We have our three supportive housing and hearing from the community of, not in my backyard, because somehow bad elements were coming. These were families with little children. They just wanted what you and I all have, a roof over their shoulder, to feel safe, to have food, shelter, clothing, those basic necessities that I sometimes take for granted. There is no shortage of compassion in the city of Elk Grove. What you have are leaders who want to partner and want to show a better way. So as it relates to really the question before us, there's really only one, and that is whether the objective standards are met. I believe and support our staff report. I think they provided sound reasoning as to why we should deny this appeal. So I support that denial. But I support working in collaboration with the community. Because whether, like Councilmember or Vice Mayor Suen mentioned, we hear these arguments all the time. And where we are best suited to make a difference together, when we're better together, is when we can work through these issues and find solutions together versus state law that unfortunately, a lot of local jurisdictions are still struggling with. We know our communities best. You know our community best. And so we're here to partner, to learn, to be a part of the solution. Because as I said, I believe every city must do more and can do more. But tonight, there is only one question before us, and that is whether or not the objective standards have been met. And I do not believe that they have. So with that, I will look for a motion.
I'll move to uphold Planning Commission denial of the project. And I'll just check to make sure if there's anything I need to read.
Nope, you don't. I'll second, adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. It's super quiet here, so it's a moment of reflection. And that's not a bad thing. But let us come together as brothers and sisters. Please talk to the other side. You're not on, you're not on different sides. This is us. We have to work through this together as a community. And I know there is so much love and compassion in the city of Elk Grove. So as you leave, leave as brothers and sisters.
The one community, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I suggest a recess until nine o'clock to allow the folks to leave?
Yes, and I need to go to restroom. All right, if we can, can we close the doors out there so that we can not be subjected to the outside noise? That would be great. Someone got the doors back there?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, we have resumed. We are on item 8.2.
And that is a public hearing to consider an ordinance approving a development agreement with Richland Plan Communities, Inc. and Beazer Homes Holdings, LLC extending the previously approved tentative subdivision maps for Arbor Ranch, Moser, Tuscan Ridge South, Treasure Homes of Madera South Phase Four subdivision projects through to June 1, 2027.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Suen, members of the Elk Grove City Council, Antonio Ablog, your planning manager, here to present to you tonight the Richland Communities' Laguna Ridge Development Agreement. This request is a development agreement establishing the terms between the city, Richland Communities, and Beazer Homes for the Laguna Ridge Holdings. While this is the Richland Communities Development Agreement for the Laguna Ridge properties, Beazer Homes was added as a developer party to this development agreement because Richland Communities did sell a property to them. So now they're a party to the agreement. Beazer Homes has agreed to all terms of the development agreement. The project is located in the Laguna Ridge specific plan area. This area is generally south of Poppy Ridge Road, west of Big Horn, east of Bruceville, and north of Bilby. As far as the Laguna Ridge specific plan itself, the Laguna Ridge specific plan covers approximately 1,900 acres. It was approved in 2004. As far as the specific plan itself, there are no changes to the specific plan development standards requested with this development agreement. This development agreement only covers specific properties in the Laguna Ridge specific plan area. It includes four previously approved tentative subdivision maps and a portion of a fifth, which is the Madera South tentative subdivision map. It covers approximately 280 acres and includes over 1,300 residential lots with, I believe, all of those being 1,300 single-family residential lots. The table above, before you shows the five tentative subdivision maps included in this DA. The reason for this development agreement is to extend the life of these tentative maps through the year 2027. As you can see from the table on the expiration date column, the soonest that one of those maps would expire is in September. And those expiration dates range from September of this year through December of next year. And all of those would be given an extension to the same July 2027 date. As far as the mechanics of a development agreement itself, the development agreement increases the certainty of the approval of development projects, leading to maximum efficient utilization of resources at the least economic cost to the public. It would provide assurance to the applicant for development of a project, that upon approval of the project, applicant may proceed with the project in accordance with the existing policies, rules, and regulations. And furthermore, it would allow the city to plan for and finance public utilities. As far as the terms for this specific development agreement between the city, Richland Communities, and Beazer Homes, it would extend the life of the associated tentative maps to June 1, 2027, which amounts to an almost five-year extension to those maps that will be the first to expire, which will be in September. As with many development agreements, it does limit the city's ability to apply subsequently adopted rules. If there was major changes to the Laguna Ridge specific plan, zoning changes, the rules that would apply to properties covered under this development agreement would remain as they are today. It will ensure the delivery and completion of the Laguna Ridge specific plan major infrastructure, which is only partially completed to this date. It would allow the city to sell sewer credits to the developer to more quickly recoup the city's costs associated with advanced delivery of the Laguna Ridge South sewer lift station. And it would allow the city to collect on various development fees that were not in effect at the time of original approvals. As far as environmental analysis on the project, staff has determined there are no further environmental reviews required based on the certified EIR for the Laguna Ridge specific plan, specifically because there are no changes to the Laguna Ridge specific plan and there are no changes to the density or intensity of the development from those improved maps. So staff's recommendation is tonight that the city council adopt an ordinance finding that no further environmental review is necessary, required to state sequel guidelines, and approving the Richland Communities' Laguna Ridge Development Agreement. Staff would be happy to answer any questions and we have a representative from Richland Communities here tonight.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and invite the applicant to speak.
Mayor Singh Allen, members of city council, Brian Cooley with Richland Plan Communities, here in support of the staff recommendation to extend the development agreement for our Laguna Ridge properties. As Antonio laid out in his presentation, really the extension of the map gives us flexibility to help deliver that public infrastructure in the Laguna Ridge specific plan. It's partially developed now and this really gives us that flexibility to keep these maps alive for this extended five-year period to do so. And, you know, it's no secret, if you've read the media with interest rates and rising home prices, the market is in a bit of a correction right now. And so this action would really give us that flexibility to continue that work with your staff to deliver that infrastructure that's vital and important to the build out of the specific plan. And we did have the luxury of having a closing with Beazer a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, we don't want to have the maps expire here this year and have to come back and redo them on and keep the progress that's going in Laguna Ridge. So you've got a long night, so I'll be brief and if you have any other questions, I'll be available. But I do appreciate an extra consideration this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, I will open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anybody signed up to speak, so I will close the public comment opportunity. Did you have any further comments, Mr. Cooley, or is that?
No.
Very good. Then I'll declare the public hearing is now closed and open it up for council comments.
Mayor, if there's any, no comments, I'll make a motion, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, in ordinance finding no further environmental review is required pursuant to state sequel guidelines, section 15162 for the Richland Communities' Laguna Ridge Development Agreement Project, PLNG 18-069, and approving a development agreement with Richland Plan Communities, Inc. and Beazer Homes Holdings, Inc., LLC, excuse me.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, next up, item 8.3.
That's a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the Republic Services' report for delinquent solid waste and storm drain utility charges and proposing their collection on Sacramento County tax roll.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Marshall Lane. I am the accounting manager. I'm here this evening to present the annual Republic Services' Delinquent Utility Report. The city contracts with Republic Services to provide solid waste and storm drain utility billing. The accounts listed tonight on the proposed tax levy are those accounts that are delinquent with Republic Services for charges that have incurred before May of this year and remain unpaid for at least 120 days. Republic Services uses the county tax roll to recover these costs and the city helps in this process. On June 19 of this year, roughly 2,500 account holders were notified of tonight's public hearing. The total dollar amount of delinquent charges this year was just under $1.2 million. You'll see on your screen the breakdown between solid waste and storm drain charges. Solid waste is just under 2,500 accounts, which represents about $953,000. Storm drain has roughly 2,400 accounts, representing about $225,000. And I did want to note that I have received some updated numbers from Republic Services. So it looks like a significant number of payments have been made and which has brought these accounts current. So right now, we stand at solid waste is now down to 1,600 accounts, totaling $773,000 in delinquent charges. And storm drain is also down to 1,600 accounts. And that delinquent amount has dropped to 180,000. We've collected in the last month, $225,000. So customers still have until tomorrow to bring their accounts current. And anyone who does will be removed from the report and will not be submitted to the county tax roll. This concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions. And we also have somebody here from Republic Services as well.
All right, thank you. I will declare the public hearing now open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone signed up to speak, so I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. Any questions?
Move motion A1.
Second.
It's the adopt the resolution.
I think it's just a motion. Sorry.
Motion.
Just a motion.
Motion, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, on to our next item, item 8.4.
No, no, no.
No?
A1 is four.
Oh, I'm on 8.4. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm like, wait, what? We're on 8.4.
We'll get there soon enough. This is a item 8.4.
I'm ready to make a motion on 8.4, apparently.
It will be five public hearings, which is going to consider various annexations to community facilities, districts for police services and maintenance services, as well as street maintenance districts and stormwater drainage fee zones for five projects that Renee will give you details on.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Renee Atar, Finance Analyst for the city, back again with more annexations. So I'm here with a brief presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. As you know, the city maintains eight special tax districts which provide funding for infrastructure for services such as for services such as police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting, and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a new development project's approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to geographic location and building use. The special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. So on June 8th of this year, the city council adopted resolutions of intent to annex the parcels for five projects, which are the Lila, Wellington Crossing Town Homes, Elliot Springs, Warda Warehouse, and 10049 Bond Road, a tentative parcel map for that project, into special tax districts and to establish tonight's public hearings. The projects are being proposed for annexation into the following various special tax districts: CFD 2003-2 for public safety services, CFD 2006-1 for maintenance services, Street Maintenance District 1 for Zones 2 and 3 for local collector and arterial street maintenance, and Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2 for stormwater drainage and runoff maintenance. This is the 61st annexation into CFD 2003-2, the 82nd annexation into CFD 2006-1, the 9th annexation into Street Maintenance District 1 Zone 2, the 45th annexation into Street Maintenance District 1 Zone 3, and the 55th annexation to Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2. All of these assessments will be levied in perpetuity. So what are these projects? The first project is the Lila, which consists of 294 multifamily units located northwest of Laguna Boulevard and Bruceville Road. The second project is Wellington Crossing Town Homes, which consists of 188 multifamily units located southeast of Elk Grove Boulevard and I-5. The third project is Elliot Springs, which consists of 651 single-family units and 125 multifamily units located northwest of Bond and Waterman Roads. The fourth project is Warda Warehouse, which consists of one single-story warehouse building located on 1.48 non-residential acres located northwest of Grantline and Waterman Roads. And the final project is the 10049 Bond Road tentative parcel map, which consists of four single-family units located northeast of Bond and Brashard Roads. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. I will declare the public hearing for CFD 2003-2 Annex 61 open and open the public comment opportunity. I don't see anyone signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to move motion A1.
Second.
Been waiting.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I would like to request the results of the ballot tabulation, please.
Of 1,262 possible votes, 1,262 affirmative votes were cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate proportion and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Move to adopt that resolution.
Second.
For motion A2?
Correct.
And we have a second from Councilmember Wayne, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then I would move motion A3, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax in the 61st annexation to Community Facilities District Number 2003-2 Police Services.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are on to the second public hearing, CFD 2006-1 Annex 82. I would like to declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 82 is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. Don't see anyone signed up, so I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 82 is now closed.
Motion B1.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And what are the results of the ballot tabulation?
Of 1,264 possible votes, 1,264 affirmative votes were cast authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate of portion and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. A resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Motion B2.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion B3, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, and ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax in the 82nd annexation to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 Maintenance Services.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, our third public hearing. I would like to declare the public hearing for SMD 2-I. My mic's not on. I'd like to declare the public hearing for SMD 2-1 Annex 9 now open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for SMD 2-, is it I or 1?
It is I, that is correct.
Annex 9 now closed.
Motion C.
And just really quick. Just very quickly, there is no majority protest. Of 294 possible votes, weighted according to proportional financial obligation for each of the properties, 294 affirmative votes were returned. Ballot approves the proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
All right, motion C.
Motion C.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Our fourth public hearing. I would like to declare the public hearing for SMD 3-AH Annex 45 now open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one has signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
And again, there is no majority protest. Of 780 possible votes, weighted according to proportional financial obligation for each property, 780 affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified on the ballot. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion D.
We have, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And on to our fifth public hearing. I would like to declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex 55 now open and open up the public comment opportunity. No one has signed up to speak, so I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for SWDF Annex 55 is now closed and ask the clerk for the ballot tabulation.
And we're back to the full count for all projects. There is no majority protest. Of 1,264 possible votes, weighted according to proportional financial obligation for each property, 1,264 affirmative votes were returned. Ballot approves the proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limits described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, on to item 9.1.
And that will be to consider a resolution establishing November 8th, 2022, as the date for an election on the proposed ballot measure seeking voter approval to impose a one-cent transactions and use sales tax for general community purposes, establishing policies and procedures in connection with such an election, approving the accompanying ordinance, and requesting the county of Sacramento conduct such an election.
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. My name is Cara Reddick, Deputy City Manager. Tonight, we're here to talk about a potential transaction and use sales tax. Tonight's presentation will include myself, Kurt Balow, Partner and COO of FM3 Research, a public opinion and national research firm, as well as City Manager Jason Bearman. I'd also like to acknowledge that there are representatives from the Kasuma CSD in the audience tonight. As a little background, in February 2021, the city council directed staff in partnership with the Kasuma CSD to engage the public on community outreach related to community needs and priorities, as well as discuss funding mechanism to meet those needs. One of the first steps that the, that was conducted was a community baseline research that included 538 residents, and that was a poll that FM3 conducted. And this did demonstrate that there was public interest in moving forward with a local general revenue measure. Between December and July, the city and the Kasuma CSD have conducted a variety of outreach that I'll talk about in a moment, but I'll just mention that there was a July community research that was conducted with 771 residents that increased and showed, showed an increase in resident interest in a general revenue measure. So the outreach efforts conducted to date, we created a website, elkrovelife.com, that was meant to be a place to, the residents could go and conduct a survey. They could also get information on the baseline research that was conducted in December, as well as it was a location for community needs. We hosted four community advisory group meetings. We conducted over five, close to 600 surveys from the elkrovelife.com website. We did two direct mailers to select residents, encouraging feedback to that website so we could hear more about the community's needs and priorities. We visited 29 individual community groups. That included 375 attendees, and we did put out 75 invitations. Just some groups are not meeting right now. Here's a listing of the groups that we met with. I won't go over that, but these are the 29 groups that we had community conversations with at their locations. Our outreach efforts included an announcement in the city's newsletter, which reaches 65,000 households, to encourage residents to go back to the website and provide their feedback on community needs and priorities. We promoted this in the city manager's general administrative report, and the city and the Kasuma CSD both promoted this item multiple times through social media, on our websites, and through email platforms throughout April, May, and June. So from the, from the December community research, there were some top priorities that were identified. We included those top priorities for additional residents to prioritize off of the elkrovelife.com website. And I apologize, some of the formatting looks a little, a little off on this, but the top priorities, as you'll learn later with the FM3 research, are really consistent. Those are reducing crime, maintaining 911 police, fire, and emergency disaster, addressing homelessness, and maintaining streets and parks. So the higher priorities are in the blue colors. So this is just a brief snapshot of a, of a non-scientific survey. The FM3 work that you'll hear about later tonight, you'll see it is consistent with this. So kind of the survey and the next steps of this presentation, I'm going to invite FM3 to come up and speak about the survey results. We'll talk about the community needs. We'll talk about the proposed ballot question, oversight accountability and local control, and then staff's recommendation. So I'd like to invite Kurt Balow.
Thank you very much, and good evening, council. Happy to present these results. I will say that I looked at your agenda, and I told Cara, I don't think I'm going to go on till at least 10 o'clock tonight. I was very much wrong. Appreciate that. All right, let me get to the results here. All right, just a quick note about the methodology of our survey. We conducted what we, what we call a dual-mode survey. So that means two data collection modes, online and phone. And so for some of the respondents took the survey, we placed the phone call, they took the survey on the phone. For others, we either sent a text message or an email and took the survey online. We were not talking to all residents or all adult residents, or not even just all voters, but those who are likely to vote in this coming November's election. So that was the sample that we used. We actually had a extremely robust response to some of those online participants. We were not shooting for quite as many interviews. We had more, but we are using the margin of sampling error of, of, right here, the kind of key numbers are about 5% for questions asked to the full sample, and about 7% for anything asked of only half the sample. So one of the proxy questions that we often use in these surveys is how much need for fund?
Real fast question. What is the, the number, the population, the number of likely 22 voters?
Oh, I'll have to look that up.
Okay, no problem. I just thought I could stop you there. My apologies, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, largely, you're modeling for a gubernatorial election around 60% turnout, kind of is a ballpark. That's without looking at historical numbers, yeah. All right, so one of our proxy questions that we use oftentimes is, do you feel like there is any need for additional funding for your city to provide services? We ask this for cities and counties and other places. It's helpful to see whether a majority feels like there is an appreciable need or not, and that gives us a bit of a feeling for whether there is potential viability for a measure. In this case, we look at those individuals who think there's either greater some need for additional funding, and in the survey we conducted last December, it was 64%, basically the same now. And so we kind of dismiss those who say a little need that doesn't necessarily correlate with support for revenue measure. But this tells us that there is a solid majority, about three in five, a little more. Both times we conducted research here, who said, hey, yeah, I feel like the city does have some material need for additional funding to provide services. And as consistent with what Cara was just going over here, we did ask about, here, if revenues were generated from this measure, if there's some other means, they could be spent on some, on some different categories, you tell us how important these categories are to you. How important would it be that additional revenue are spent in these areas? I think there's some shading issues here, but the patriotic blue and red bars are the ones we tend to focus on here. The more, they're extremely important or very important, and we summarize those on the right-hand side. And so all these items on this slide were seen as at least very important by three-quarters of respondents to the survey. So emergency response, some public safety items we mentioned here, homelessness here, street maintenance, and maybe the only one that's, a couple that are a little bit different are public disclosure of spending. That seemed to resonate particularly strongly with response to the survey, as well as keeping funds here locally. There's a lot of concern about funds that are generated that go to the county or state and other jurisdictions. So those seem to be high priorities for voters here in Elk Grove. Moving down the, the list a little bit here, everything here is still seen as very important by a solid majority. You're starting to see the bars get a little bit smaller here. We have parks, and different ways of talking about street maintenance here, going further down the list, reducing traffic congestion as a, as a local issue. It may be different if we're asking about it on, on local freeways and highways. Further down the list, but still, majorities found them important. So, now we've, sorry. Finally getting to the actual ballot question here. So we went through and said, we read a hypothetical 75 words, or they read it themselves. We asked, would you vote yes or no on this measure? If they said yes or no, we pushed them a little bit. Is that definitely yes, or probably yes? Definitely no, probably no. And anyone who said that they were initially undecided, we said, well, are you leaning one way or another? So it gives us three flavors of yes, three flavors of no, and that green bar at the bottom, the undecided, those are people who truly were asked twice initially, and we're like, I'm a real fence sitter here. And in this case, our three flavors of yes are at 63%, with a solid third saying they would definitely vote yes. If you take out those who are only leaning yes, those may be more tentative. Those may be more susceptible to communications dialogue, concerns about economic anxiety. Then if you lost those, we'd be at that 56% number. So probably looking at a range in the mid, mid 50s up to the low-mid 60s, which is a few points higher, as Cara noted, from the baseline survey we conducted in December. Just a couple, we have all sorts of demographics, just a couple for this presentation here. Men and women were both supportive at majority levels. There was a little bit of a gender gap where women were supportive at the 69% level, and men at 57. There was a little bit of an age dynamic that we noticed here, where younger voters were a little more supportive, close to around two-thirds. Voters, seniors, still a majority, express support, and this is a majority vote measure, but a little bit lower at 55%. And looking across some of the geographical splits in your community here, support was pretty consistent geographically across the city, right around that same, you know, low to mid 60s range. So in conclusion here, a lot's happened in the last couple of years, and obviously, you know, the, a lot of things happened from the baseline survey we conducted in December just to now. But assuming that all these sort of conditions sort of hold, it looks like a one-cent majority vote, general purpose measure is viable coming up this November, assuming everything stays the same. We had a 60% vote in, for a similar measure in our December survey. We made a few adjustments to that, so it's a little bit higher level than that. And this is pretty consistent with just a hair less than two-thirds felt like there was at least some need for funding for the city. So there's a consistency there of support in the 60s for a measure, and roughly 60% or more feel like, hey, you, the city needs more funds. I think we kind of, I kind of talked over a few of the highest priorities, and I don't want to be too redundant, given we've covered this a little bit already, and Cara covered a little bit of that as well. So I think that gets me to the end, and I think we're going to pass over to the city manager. So I think that gets me to the end, and I think we're gonna pass over to the city manager.
Thank you, Kurt. Evening again, mayor, members of the city council, Jason Berman, city manager. My privilege to talk about a few additional items. First, I wanted to thank FM3, Lou Edwards Group, has kind of assisted us through this process. Our agency partners, the CASUNASD, who are here tonight, as Kara mentioned, really been integral, and it's really been a true partnership and the dialogue with our community. I want to also thank our, our community advisory group that we pulled together to kind of bounce ideas off of and get their feedback, who represent important interests in our community. And then just all of the community groups that we went out and visited, it was really a valuable exercise to go out and do a lot of listening, and talking about needs in the community, hearing what they had to say, us being able to share some of the things that we're looking at. It's important as a community, as a city, as we look to the future. What is going to make Elk Grove, um, safe? What's gonna improve and increase our quality of life here? How do we do that? How do we assure that those services and the things that people love about our community are maintained? And so those, the dialogue's really valuable and important for us as, as staff, um, for both the city and the CSD. So I want to talk a little bit about the community needs that were discussed and shared at some of these meetings and groups, and things that are important for the community to understand, and I think we're illuminating in some ways, uh, as we have those discussions. So first, I'm gonna talk about, uh, the public safety needs. Uh, we've reported on this in the past with the city council, but, uh, crime is on the rise. It's not just in Elk Grove, but it's, it's a, it's a statewide, nationwide trend. Last year in Elk Grove, 2021, and there was a 12.3% increase in violent crime, a 3.7% increase in property crime. Um, also that means that there were 325 robberies and close to 200 car thefts among a variety of different kinds of crimes that were committed in our community. Um, also earlier this year, we presented the results of a staffing cert, uh, study that we did for our police department that identified what the needs were going to be over the next five years, in order for us to keep up with all of the, the growth in the community and the issues that were evident. And that survey or that study came back, we presented to the city council, identified a need for an additional 27 new police department positions over the next five years, which is significant. We also shared information related to response times. That's the other, the other thing that's really important of the community. How fast will the ambulance arrive, or a police, uh, cruiser arrive, or a fire truck arrive when I pick up the phone and call 911, when, when I'm at my most dire, um, hour? How long will it take for them to respond? And the answer is not as quickly as we want to be able to provide. Um, one of the things that's important to note that we share with the community is when it comes to the fire department and CSD, um, where 75% of calls for service are for emergency medical services, by far the largest number. Um, and response times for those services are at seven and a half minutes, and there's a national standard of five minutes. So we, we fall short of providing that service. And in the fire department's own staffing analysis, they've identified, um, that there's a need for an additional 18 personnel, um, in order to get up to that national standard. Um, and as we all know, when it comes to especially medical services, minutes, seconds count. You talk about, um, heart conditions, or stroke, or other kinds of things, and so that is a critical issue, and that is something that really resonated with our community as we talked about those community needs. Uh, we also talked, and we talked a lot about tonight earlier, about addressing homelessness in our community. It's something that is on everybody's mind, not enough just in Elk Grove, but all over, um, the country. And how do we, how do we properly address that? It takes resources, um, in order to, to do that. The number of those individuals experiencing homelessness in our community is increasing, as it is throughout the region and state. And so additional resources allow us to address some of the root causes of the problem, including mental health, substance abuse, job training, um, while ensuring that our local businesses and our communities, our public areas remain clean and safe for everybody. And so we had a lot of good, valuable discussions about what that looks like, and what can we do about this, um, this growing concern, and how do we best help, help these individuals? Beyond that, and this was articulated in the, in the survey results, and through things that were also brought up as important for our community, I'll go over a few of these really quickly. Streets and roads, maintaining the basic infrastructure in our community. Many of our roads are, are aging, the city is getting older and in need of repair and ongoing maintenance, and, um, we'd had a, a report, and within the last couple of months, from our public works department, with the great job they've done, being more efficient in how we deliver services and spending taxpayer dollars wisely, but the need continues to grow. And we want to, um, improve the surface streets and the way we get around town, it requires more money. And there's a deficit of about $2 million in order to increase or improve, um, those services and the condition of our roadways in the city. Additionally, um, traffic is a growing concern, something we hear quite frequently from our residents, and so the ability to, to improve the roadways, as well as introduce new innovation and technology to allow traffic signals to, to, to allow traffic to flow better, more efficiently through our community, was discussed and talked about with these community members. We're proud of our parks in our community and our open space. We have over 100 parks. We're, I just announced tonight, we've got 101st Park grand opening coming up next week. Uh, we have 1,000 acres of open space. We need to keep those spaces, uh, clean and, and safe. And, um, it, it remains an ongoing issue to make sure that the public restrooms, and the landscaping, and the sports fields, and the children's playgrounds and things are all kept up to our community's standards. And then, and then finally, the thing that, that also resonated with residents is just maintaining a robust economy, right? Creating jobs. Um, Elk Grove, when it incorporated in 2000, was largely a bedroom community. There wasn't a lot of industry down here, and it's improved over the last 20-plus years, but there's still a long ways to go. And we need to, to do more to increase, um, the economic base of our community. And so that resonated, and that was discussed in these community groups as well. So that's how we came up with this ballot language. It was through the, the polling work that was done, it was through the discussion with our partner agencies, with our, our community advisory group, with the citizens that we met with in all of these meetings. I'll read to you, um, briefly what this proposed ballot question is being proposed to be on the November 2022 ballot. Elk Grove's called the Elk Grove Safety Quality of Life Measure to Support Essential Services Such As Crime Reduction, Rapid 911 Fire, Police, Medical Emergency Disaster Response, Keeping Public Areas Safe and Clean, Addressing Homelessness, Pot Hole Repair, Street Park Maintenance, Youth Crime Gang Prevention Programs, and Other General Community Purposes. Shall the Measure Establishing a One-Cent Sales Tax Providing Approximately $21.3 Million Annually Until Ended by Voters, Requiring Audit, Citizen Oversight, Public Spending Disclosures, and All Funds Locally Controlled Be Adopted? As was noted in the survey, as Kurt talked about, um, some of the things that, that citizens, um, indicated was important to them, was the establishment of audits and oversight, and so the measure would establish a Citizens Oversight Committee Advisory Board to review the revenues and expenditures generated by the, the measure. Um, the future resolution would come back establishing the members' terms, qualifications, duties, and scope of that committee. Um, annual audits and public spending disclosures. Also by law, all funds from this measure must stay in Elk Grove, and no funds can be taken by the state. Those were important elements, um, of our community. A new item that was recently discussed, we received a request from region business to include local banking requirement in the ordinance, so the, the funds generated could be reinvested in the community through additional loans. So if desired, the council would like to, could revise the ordinance that's part of your packet to include the language that's on the screen. I'll read it for you briefly. It says, unless restricted or prohibited by state or federal law or regulations, the city will hold at least 25% of all the funds generated pursuant to this chapter and accounts locally through a community bank for purposes of selection. And then it, and then it goes on to just define what a community bank is, and need to maintain certain standards, as far as superior, five-star equivalent, um, and then the city shall be responsible for compliance with this section and must certify to the city council and report to the requirements have been met, or provide an explanation for not meeting them. So the staff recommendation is that the city council adopt by two-thirds vote, which was four out of five, a resolution establishing November 8th, 2022, as the date for an election on a proposed ballot measure, seeking voter approval to impose a one-cent transaction and use general tax, and approving the accompanying ordinance, including the community banking revision. And staff has reviewed the language and is okay with the insertion or the revision of the ordinance to include that language in that. And just as a reminder, council action tonight does not reflect support or opposition of the measure, simply places it on the ballot for local voters to decide. Um, this action is based on the community feedback, which we've had over the last six-plus months. And that concludes our presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, well, thank you for the presentation. We'll hold off on the questions until after we hear from the public. So I will, at this time, open up the public comment opportunity and invite up Liz Irons, followed by Lynn Wheat.
Before we do that, it looks like we're gonna hit 10 o'clock. Do you want to waive the 10 o'clock rule? Yeah, 13 minutes.
Yeah, yes, please.
12 minutes.
We can do it quickly. Oh, you're right.
I'll move to waive the 10 o'clock rule.
Second.
All those in favor?
I, we'll still strive to.
Yeah, I neglect, I somehow scrolled over Mr. Lindsey, so apology, but you're here, that's fine, we'll just have Paul go next.
Okay.
You're already up here.
Good evening, um, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I am in support of the sales tax increase because I'd like to see bicycle patrols for, um, the police department. I think it's imperative to keep our children safe. I think then the, the police department can see a greater indication of campers, um, and the homelessness that we see. I also would like to see, um, more work done for CSD on the parks. Case in point is Fails Park. We recently cleaned that park up. In five minutes, I found 12 syringes. Now, this is in the back, it's not the trash, but it's in the bushes where the people are living. We also found a big screen TV, probably like that size, smashed on the ground. What chemicals are in there? What gets into the groundwater? What happens when a child goes into a park and steps, goes off the beaten path, and steps on a syringe, wearing sandals? Something like that. Fentanyl can immediately kill you. So, now, most people wouldn't want tax increases, but you guys have been great working at CSD, in the city, picking up, you know, for anti-trash litter. I will have to say, we've heard more and more requests that quality of life, let's get a performing arts center here. As an art commissioner, I can tell you, that's the number one request that we hear. Just think about how it would enhance our city. People could go to the theater, then go out to eat. I mean, I know some, um, Vice Mayor Soon took his parents out for dinner and then went to the swing concert, and you seemed to have a wonderful time, and so did Pat. Um, you, you really look cute dancing with your mom. But it was, uh, you know, just think about the enhancement on our community. We have some nice little restaurants, family restaurants, people go to the theater, they go out to dinner. It might put us on the map a little bit, and, you know, there's Harris, whatever, in Folsom, but I don't want to go to Folsom, I want to spend my money here. And the other thing is, our sales tax currently is lower than other areas around, so we might not just notice it, hopefully. But thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next up is Paul Lindsey, then Lynn Wheat.
And Liz, thank you for your work in the Elk Grove Trash Cleanup Crew.
Good evening. Before I begin, Lynn had to go, so she won't be speaking tonight. Give me a second while I find my remarks. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Paul Lindsey, I'm sure you all know me. All of you spoke eloquently, uh, earlier this evening, of compassion. I ask that you keep that discussion in mind as I talk. I'm sure all of you know that a sales tax is one of, if not the, most regressive taxes. It hits across all economic interest sectors, but affects those least able to bear it the most. If you approve this proposed revenue measure, it will join a county sales, uh, countywide sales tax measure of a half-cent increase in the countywide sales tax. If both are approved, the city of Elk Grove will bear a nine and a quarter percent sales tax. In the greater Sacramento Valley area, this will be tied for the highest sales tax imposed with any, any city limits in the six-county area. In the current economic arena, with fluctuating inflation continuing to rise, with the nation on the brink of recession, with even the world on the brink of recession, it would be less than compassionate to even propose this action. This is not the time, not the place. Remember your words of compassion, deny this proposal, or defer this resolution until the economy is better. And if you have questions, Iilton, Rancho Cordova in Sacramento would, would tie us. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And next up is Orlena Van Zant, followed by Vaughn Evans, Senior.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Soon, council members, city manager Berman and staff. My name is Orlena Van Zant, I'm the COO of the Sacramento Region Business Association. We just wanted to thank your staff for recommending our rise banking language in your tax measure. Uh, holding these funds in the local community is good policy and will support job creation. Um, we wanted to share our endorsement of the sales tax and offer any support we can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Vaughn Evans, Senior.
Well, I'm not gonna say good afternoon, it's definitely almost good night, but, uh, anyhow, Madam Mayor, council members, I come to you as a 100% disabled vet, and with 24 years of service in the United States Army. I've been in Elk Grove since 1999, and I don't find it at all pleasing to say how disgusted I am about a sales tax. When I looked at my home, and I saw 60% water increase for five years, PG&E with fires up in other places, not even close to Sacramento, that now they asking us to pay for, smud, you name it, it's more taxes. I'm, again, I'm a 100% disabled vet, I'm retired, if y'all don't understand that, retired. I don't get all these extras. I can't go get, uh, 20% income tax increase. Maybe you guys can, because you're still working, but I can't. Oh, your presentation was beautiful, my brother. Please believe me, it looked good. But I tell you right now, as the gentleman said back there, it sure ain't the time. It's, maybe, you know, I look at the gasoline tax just on the 3rd of this month, three cent a gallon, oh, don't look big. I guarantee you, everybody's fighting trying to get into Costco to get some gas. They ain't trying to go to Shell or Chevron, they trying to go to the cheapest. Y'all need to think about that. We got to make do with what we have right now, because it ain't a good time, or else we all be out there pitching tits like I used to in armor. See, I don't, I don't pitch tits in the rain. It's not a good feeling. So, it don't, it's just not a perfect time to try to raise a, you didn't say a half-cent tax or a quarter tax, you said a one-cent tax. That's pretty bold and arrogant. You just, and then you said, oh, the people you surveyed, I haven't seen one element or one letter about a tax increase until I looked and said, oh, no, not tonight, I'm tired, I'm really tired. And when I think about the people that are out there homeless, hell, I'd be out there with them if y'all keep raising taxes. Come on, let's have some heart, add some decency, and common sense about our money. Thank you, and a good night.
Thank you, sir. I don't see anybody else signed up to speak, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity, and open it up for council deliberations and direction. We'll start to the right, um, with council member Lynn. Did you have something? Oh, all right, we're just adjusting the microphones.
First, Mr. Evans, I want to say thank you for your service. Um, and I, I hear you. It, it's, it really is a hard time right now for everybody, with the gas tax, increased inflation. But I also look at what was presented to us by M3 and what was presented to us by our city manager as well, too. And as our city manager indicated, a vote on this doesn't mean that you're supportive of it or not supportive of it, but you're supportive in putting it on the ballot so that our voters can decide on what we want to do here in our city. We are a growing city, and we will continue to grow. We've grown tremendously, and there are a lot of things that are left undone that we need to address. There are a lot of things that we are going to have to address. And so I'm supportive of putting this on the ballot in November so that we can let our community and our voters decide on what's going to happen here in our city.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees?
So a couple of things that I'm not surprised about. I'm not surprised that Elk Grove residents highly value public safety. Not surprised that they value clean, safe streets and neighborhoods. And again, I'm not surprised, as we are a compassionate city, that residents are interested in finding solutions for homelessness. None of that surprises me at all. But I am shocked, surprised, even flabbergasted that given our current economic climate, residents are supportive of a tax increase. Record-high inflation, edge of an economic recession, record state budgets, or state, whatever you call it, revenue, right? I'm just absolutely surprised. So one could say that putting this on the, putting the tax measure forward at this time is tone deaf. But then somebody reminded me of something else. Counter to that, if you ask somebody a question and they give you their honest feedback, if you don't listen to the answer, then you're tone deaf. We've gone out and we've asked the voters if they're interested in a tax increase. And as I saw today, 60% said that they do. The question for us tonight is not if we are going to do a tax increase, but it's putting the question to the voters. I do have a couple of questions first, though. Were the respondents questioned regarding another tax measure for transportation? Were they aware that there's another transportation tax? They were asked that in the questioning. Okay. With that, I'll support sending the question to the voters, and I would like to revise to add the local banking requirement.
Vice Mayor Soon?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank for everybody for staying late to comment on this item. It is an item that will affect our city, just like 8.1. And Mr. Evans, also thank you for your service. It's good to see you again. It's been a while. And I remember, you know, the first time we met is dealing with some code enforcement issues in your neighborhood. And the resources to help with that come from the city, you know. And as we grow, as Councilmember Wynn mentioned, as we grow as a city, those types of issues will continue to persist. And we have to have resources in order to keep our city safe and keep it clean, respond to emergencies. And so that's the, that's the hard part because I heard you and others that spoke tonight, Mr. Lindsay as well, the timing. And there is no good timing for taxes. It's never a good time to pay more for something. But the sad truth is, things continue to cost more. That our needs as a city, as we grow, will continue to increase. And if we're not able to keep up, if we're not planning ahead, then we will fall behind. Because earlier tonight, you heard from different departments introducing the new staff members. Those folks that were hired by the, by the city, it wasn't a snap of a finger. I mean, there's a whole process, if you can, if you think about it. There's a whole process about advertising and interviewing and finding the right people. So at the same time, when you need the city to function, you can't snap your fingers and have those people appear right away. So we have to plan. We have to plan ahead. We have to plan for the future. Now, I'm not saying that, you know, everybody's going to approve this. I, I think what we've heard tonight is there's enough interest in asking the question. And that's all we're doing here tonight, is whether or not we want to even ask the question. And I'm sure there, you know, as the survey showed, there was plenty of people who say no, and that's fine. And then obviously, there's an overwhelming that seemed to say yes. So from my perspective, you know, when I look at our city, being able to maintain those services, recognizing our reliance on county, help from the county to deal with homelessness, I don't have a whole lot of faith in that. It's just feels like, feels like local governments are required to do more now. And so in that sense, we're on our own. And so we've got to plan and be able to have those resources to continue to serve our residents. So with that, I also support putting it on the ballot to ask the question. And I will second Councilmember Spees's addition to add the language for the local banks. Keeping some funds in our, in our city, at our local community banks, I think is a prudent thing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Evans, for your service. Appreciate you, appreciate you staying out here tonight and sitting through this to make your voice heard. You know, I've had, been spending a lot of time up in Rancho Cordova, and they have passed two sales taxes up there. And the amount of money that they bring into the city is significant, and it has really done some great things, particularly around their nonprofit sector, in addition to some of the city amenities and beautification and streetscapes and types of things that the taxes normally go to pay for. And it, you know, it's a little ironic that last time we were thinking about doing this, I advocated to hold off on doing our own tax so that we could throw in on the regional measure, only to have that measure fizzle away because some objectionable language got added at the 11th hour. And now here we are, two years later, in a, you know, very different financial environment. And I don't know if we're experiencing it at our shelter, but I know at shelters around the nation, there's a greater surrendering of animals because people are having to make the choice whether or not to feed themselves or feed their pets. So I hear what's being said. I cannot in good conscience even ask the question of should you pay more to your government right now?
Thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, we are all going through tough times. There's no doubt about that. We see it, we see it on the streets. We heard it earlier today of the need. But ensuring a high quality of life, it costs money. And I think the polling, the feedback would be tone deaf to not respond to what seems to be in the mid-60s support. It's not for me to decide. What I can respond to is letting the voters decide. The voters have the right to be heard. Ensuring a high quality of life, we are gathering a lot of great data on this website with Elk Grove Life that outlines so many of our needs. I applaud the public engagement effort, very remarkable, with all of the community groups. That feedback reflects Elk Grove. But we have identified a series of priorities as a council during our retreat. We've reinforced it at board meetings, or at council meetings. Reducing crime, addressing homelessness, emergency response time. This is life and death. Five seconds or five minutes and the seven-minute, some second, that gap? If you've had a heart attack, that's life and death. We don't have the luxury of time. I applaud our first responders for doing such an amazing job with the finite resources that exist in keeping our community safe. So I recognize all of the great work that you do, and thank you for your service. I hear from constituents all the time for the need for more officers. I have gone on numerous ride-alongs with our PD for the need for more officers. I've had coffees with residents that bring up these issues. So I think the prudent thing as a mayor who's out in the community very actively, I hear you. And so for me, putting this ultimately to the voters is the prudent thing to do. Let the voters decide. So with that, and I also support the local banking requirement proposed by Region Business. I think that's, that's a great idea, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. So with that, I will look for a motion.
I think Councilmember Spees made the motion and
Well, he made the motion for the language for community bank.
I simply stated that I would support to revise local banking.
Right, the community banking.
So feel free.
So I make the motion. Is there anything else?
With the added language?
With the added language. Yeah.
I'll second, but I wanted to ask one more question.
Yes, please.
Jason, could you also clarify, because there was a conversation about whether, a while back, about whether the tax applies to medication or?
It does not. Sales tax in California, so in some states, sales tax is a really regressive tax. They tax prescription drugs, they tax food, and California does not. Prescription drugs and food that you buy at the grocery store is not a sales tax item.
Okay, right, thank you. And then for our auto mall, people pay the sales tax where they reside, right? It's not based on us being in Elk Grove, right? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a second?
Yeah, that's second, yeah.
Okay. So we will do a roll call vote, just to get it on the record. Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Spees?
Aye.
Council, Vice Mayor Soon?
Aye.
Councilmember Hume?
No.
And Mayor, aye. So we, motion passes. Thank you. Onto our next item, which is considering the appointment of six voting members to the youth commission.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk for this recruitment. We kicked off the process back on May 11th of 2022. We've changed around our summer break schedule, and that's why this recruitment and the appointment consideration is coming up to tonight. We did have a deadline of July 20th, 2022. We did receive 14 applications of that set of 14 originally. There was one that didn't meet the requirements for residency within the jurisdiction of the city of Elk Grove and qualifying school in Elk Grove. But then, over the course of the weekend, after the printing of the staff report, we did receive another application that came in that would be considered late after the deadline, but it was received and it was forwarded for staff or for council consideration. So we had a listing that's a little bit expanded under the staff memo, and the application was sent out for that applicant that applied on Sunday. But we also have several of the applicants in the audience tonight ready to make some comments in consideration of their appointment.
All right, excellent. Thank you for that. And at this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. And we have a few applicants here, so we will start with Pratham Rangwal, followed by Priyam Rangwal.
Nope.
I got it wrong? Oh, sorry, gosh. Yeah, 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 I got it. I scrolled. So we're going to start with Jayden Chen. Apologies. Thank you. I am on the down arrow.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the committee. I'm Jayden Chen, and I'm a rising junior at Consumers Oaks High School. I'm currently working as a lifeguard for CSD and also a member of the Red Cross Club at my school. I'd like to be considered for the youth commission because I believe I have the insight and the perspective into some of the key issues that are impacting myself and my peers in our community today. Some of the issues that I want to help find solutions for are mental health, as well as future career and educational opportunities. For one, one issue impacting my peers and I is mental health. I recently found out over the summer that a classmate of mine had committed suicide, and no one had any idea what he was going through. He did not display any signs of depression nor that he was struggling. Although it is too late to help my classmate, I want to be able to help and be a voice to advocate and help my fellow peers who may be silently struggling. Another issue I've observed in my school and classmates is the lack of engagement in classrooms. Many students are not sure what they want to do in the future and find school pointless and boring. They don't take full advantage of their education and the resources provided to them. I believe students should be taught tangible skills that they can use in the real world, which will help them gain a career after leaving high school. I'm hoping to have the opportunity to serve on the youth commission to be able to provide a unique perspective and contribute ideas to help combat some of the issues that are impacting my peers and I. Serving on the youth commission would be an incredible honor, privilege, and responsibility. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Parak Tazeeb.
And then followed by Ethan Lipsy. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Parak Tazeeb, and I'm an incoming senior at Elk Grove High. Right now, I'm in the civic summer program, so I believe I've seen some of you guys speaking there. And currently, I'm interning at the city manager's office in public affairs with graphics and multimedia. If you guys are out at the multicultural festival, please grab some of the stickers because I made some of them, and I'm very proud of them. But something that I've always valued is giving back to the community. When I was little, like, I'd always want to help out my peers and just enrich the community. That's why I've been really interested in the youth commission. When I found out about it, I already knew that I wanted to be a part of it, no matter what. In fact, I've already been trying to give back where I can. There was a barbecue for awareness for the Zoo Project at Camera Park about one to two weeks ago, and I was there helping out, and I believe I saw some of you guys there. So it's just been like a big part of my identity of just creating a richer community. And here at Elk Grove, even though I've only been living here for like three, four years, I've been able to see how, how much like effort that you guys, that you guys take to make sure that the city is as bright and vibrant as it can be. And I just want to give my insight and my voice into helping making Elk Grove a better place. So thank you.
Thank you. Ethan Lipsy, and then Om Shah.
Before I begin, I'd just like to say thank you all for staying this late. It's very late, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the city council. My name is Ethan Lipsy. I'm a rising senior at Consumers Oaks High School, part of the coding robotics pathway and the visual and performing arts program. I have a vision for Elk Grove that can be achieved through good teamwork and determination. The youth commission is the greatest young minds in our community that help, that gather together to help make Elk Grove a better place for everyone. Being a part of the youth commission would help me be an active member of this community and allow me to be a part of the progression that this wonderful community makes and help plant trees whose shade the next generation will enjoy. I would be thrilled to receive your endorsement for the youth commission. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. Next is Om Shah, followed by Pratham Rangwal.
I would like to start off with, again, it's really late. Thank you, everyone. So also, thank you, respected council members and Mayor Singh Allen, for letting me speak here today. And I just, I heard about this commission last year, and I really wanted to join, and I just, I couldn't do it last year. But coming back this year, I've been able to gain so many experiences. I've been able to make so many more connections, and I've, I've really seen the world in a different way now. I've seen many of the issues, many issues teens and our youth have right now is extreme and extreme rigor in high school, where high school is not high school anymore. It's do whatever in almost It's do, do whatever and almost everything you can to get into a good college. High school isn't, high school isn't learning about things in school that would help you in your professional life and it's, it's very competitive. And this, this and with a bunch of moody teens all trying to fit in is, is a big issue because this, this can lead to things like depression and in extremely serious cases, suicide. And I have many ideas to solve the problem, including monthly magazines on paper and online and holding monthly events to bring the youth community together. I have experience of being on a youth commission myself. I am part of the West Region, like, West Region Board of, West Region Committee, Commission for the, all the BAPS temples. And we also do projects such as making magazines and holding large-scale conventions for, for like thousands of kids and youth. I've, I've always been wanting to help the, I've always wanted to help the community. I always try my best to help, to volunteer whenever I can at my temple. I teach, I not only teach at my temple, I teach martial arts at Kovar Satory Academy. And I also teach toddlers at the BAPS temple here in Mather. So if you could give me a seat in this commission, your votes will surely be put to use into making our amazing, diverse city of Elk Grove better and stronger. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Pratham Rangwal, followed by Priyam Rangwal.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and council members. My name is Pratham Rangwal and I'm going into 10th grade at Franklin High School and I'm 14 years old. I would love to be a part of the youth commission so I can create a change in my community and raise opinion, and raise my opinions on issues affecting today's youth in Elk Grove. Some of these issues that I'm passionate about involve the prevalent use of e-cigarettes and other addictive products. I believe, I also believe that many careers, such as the medical field, are not equally supported as much as others like computer science and engineering, at least in my school in Franklin High. I'm also an active member of the community. I'm part of the Civil Air Patrol, the National Auxiliary of the Air Force. This program is centered around developing the nation, the nation's future, future youth through service and STEM. I also created a website last December with Coldwell Banker to help homeless students through the winter break with food and supplies. I also have experience as the team captain of my middle school Cyber Patriot team. This year, I was also part of the Half Dome Team, which, I was also one of the six members of the Half Dome Team, who recently won second place nationwide in the Cyber Patriot Cybersecurity Competition. We also won the NorCal Mayor's Cyber Cup, which we could win back to Elk Grove and give to Mayor Bobby Smith Allen. Thank you for listening and I hope you consider my application.
Thank you. Next up is Priyam Rangwal.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Priyam Rangwal, an upcoming sophomore at Franklin High School. I would like to be a part of the youth commission because I want to help resolve issues I see in our city as a, as a teenager and be of service to my community. I have leadership experience from participating in Cyber Patriot and then Official Auxiliary of the United States Air Force Civil Air Patrol. Cyber Patriot helped me improve my leadership skills as I taught members of my naturally-ranked team about Linux security. In the Civil Air Patrol, I am a staff sergeant and I've conducted classes for members of the Composite Squadron 14 about leadership and safety. Throughout my time in these programs, I have learned a lot about leadership and time management, which can reflect on my performance as a member of the youth mission. Thank you for your time and I hope you consider my application.
Thank you. Next up is Lindsay Ngo, followed by Cassie Parsons.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and members of the Elk Grove City Council. My name is Lindsay Ngo. I'm an incoming sophomore at Pleasant Grove High School and I want to join the Elk Grove Youth Commission. I first discovered the youth commission when I attended the May 11th, 2022 Elk Grove City Council meeting. I watched the commission present their scholarship awards and announce upcoming events such as Party on the Palms and Path to Positivity. I got event stickers from a youth commission member and advertised the event at school. I was intrigued and inspired by the commission members' desire to uplift other youth. After listening to today's public comment on the housing project, I know that I am passionate about being involved in the current events of our city. It's especially important to me to advocate for other children and give them hope for the future. My goal by applying for the youth commission is to create a safe and exciting environment where youth feel respected and valued. I've seen many people around me trapped in their own thoughts because of fear, including one of my close friends. She never felt confident enough to express her own opinions and eventually close people off. It was difficult to watch her mental health decline and eventually lose excitement towards life. I want her and many others to realize that there's a community of people willing to take the time to listen and put together events to help them feel better. I would also like to focus on cyber safety. Social media and the internet have become a bigger part of our lives and many people use it to take advantage of youth. When they become manipulated, it overall lowers their self-esteem. By acknowledging this issue and using my voice, I could, would contribute to a healthier and happier society. Since I'm only a sophomore, I can continue to expand my knowledge and contribute more throughout my years in high school. I would be dedicated and involved with the youth commission because I've always enjoyed helping people, whether that was through being a volunteer at the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society or helping with the Elk Grove Food Bank and Wind Youth Services. At the Leukemia and Lymphoma events, I would help register and check in guests, decorate and put up signs, show participants where to go, and keep a positive attitude. I was then helping provide for low-income families through the Elk Grove Food Bank by sorting and passing out healthy foods. At the Wind Youth Services, I would collect blankets and clothes to donate to runaway youth who needed support. I was also at my middle school, Albionni All-Stars Club, which expects students to be involved with community service and academically motivated. As a part of Albionni All-Stars, I joined mentors club, where I assisted students who needed help with their schoolwork. It made me happy to help others grow to be the best version of themselves. Thank you for your time and I hope to be considered for the Elk Grove Youth Commission.
Thank you so much. And our final speaker is Cassie Parsons.
Can we appoint somebody who's already on the youth commission? I don't understand. Oh.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I've been on the commission for the last two years. My first year as a freshman, I was secretary, and last year, I was the chairperson. I had the chance to speak to Mayor Singh Allen this morning on the phone and we had a great conversation. I expressed my concerns about how appointments have gone in the past. So in the past, many council members leaned towards appointing upperclassmen so that they can have a chance to be on the commission. I don't, I'm not fully against this, but I also feel like underclassmen are a great choice because they have a bunch of years to get experience on the commission and learn how it works and get like more opportunities through it. And also seniors tend to be very busy in their senior year and miss stuff. I also want to let all applicants know that we do have a strict attendance policy and to be aware of it. Also, if you don't get appointed on the commission, I strongly encourage you to come back and participate in city things. You can come to youth commission meetings and events to get more involved. The youth commission is a great program and I can't wait to see what this year has in store. I also wanted to thank all of you council members for always supporting the commission and helping us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cassie, for your service.
Yes, and, all right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and now comes like the hardest part ever, is nominating from such talented, amazing students. I have, my hats off to the seven of you that showed up to participate and actually express your interest in person, especially during this late hour. So I would ask my council colleagues to keep that in mind. But in the interest of equity and fairness, I'm, you know, I love to hear your thoughts and maybe move your top pick. I'll start with my top pick and then we'll just go and who you want and we'll move them forward and that will leave one person for us to rally over, you know, rally around in support of. But I would say, you know, let's keep in mind what, what Cassie mentioned. I think there's a lot of merit in, in what you provide, but let that, that be sort of an exclusionary methodology as well. But let's look at, but right now, our current makeup, we have three females and one male on our commission. Two are from Pleasant Grove, one from Franklin, one from Bradshaw. And only one person of color in the current makeup of our commission. So just to put that in the back of your mind. But I would like to move forward for his tenacity for coming back and reapplying Om Shah. So I'll go to Councilmember Nguyen for your top pick. And maybe it was, you know, who I said, but then whoever is your next person.
I'm going to go with Lindsay.
Lindsay Ngo?
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Spees?
I would then go with Ethan Lipsy.
Okay. Vice Mayor Sun?
You took mine, Councilmember Spees. Let's see. You said Om Shah already, right?
Yep, that was my first pick.
Because I was looking at district representation as well and, and, you know, there's, there's a district, a couple of district ones in there, but I also have points for, for being present, being present. So I guess, because I'm looking at, again, there's a lot of District 2 as well.
Yeah, we had strong interest from Consumnas Oaks High School and Franklin.
District 4, whoop, whoop.
That's true. Only, only Ayella's on District 4, that's true.
I will say, you don't have to live in District 4 to go to Casio. You can actually live in my district. Well, I live, my, my district's the city, so that doesn't really count. I live in Stone Lake.
Okay, I'm willing to go, I'm willing to go Franklin in District 4, but I'm sorry, one of the brothers, I don't, I'm just, you know...
Flip a coin so it's not personal.
I know.
I don't know. I just, that's a hard one. I didn't want to touch that one.
Well, I'm going to go with Pratham because he was the first one that spoke.
Okay, so you're moving forward, Pratham. And then we will go to Councilmember Hume.
Oh my gosh, you guys are killing right now. You took, you took all the good choices. So I looked at, I wouldn't say that, I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that.
We love you all.
It's late. Forgive.
A lot of the choices that I already had listed were, were...
That's not helping.
Taken. Here's some things that I looked at as well, district representation, male-to-female representation, as well as race, ethnicity representation, and age, as was brought up. And so a couple of things that I would throw out there just for consideration when we have that sixth place.
Yeah.
Omar Mawandi is the only District 1, District 1 slash 3 for residence in school. And so that came to my attention. Miles Luke was the only African-American, came to my attention.
Yeah.
And, but as far as showing up is oftentimes, a lot of the, the way that you get yourself noticed, Parak Tazeeb would be the choice that I'm going to put forward.
Okay, so that leaves us with one more slot. And this is tough. Just excellent, excellent candidates from those that are here that showed up are Jayden and Priyam Rangwal, so...
We did one of the brothers, so Jayden, because he's here and it's...
Maybe you can like, you know, have, have a, have a, an understudy that shows up. I would really recommend that anybody who's watching, that you all participate. This just means you're not a voting member. That doesn't stop you from coming to every meeting and joining and participating, and we will recognize your participation. But I think Jayden would be one that I would move forward.
Yeah. And that gets Consumnas Oaks High School in there as well.
Okay, so we have our six that we have moved forward. And thank you to all of our amazing students that applied. What this leads me to believe, based on the comments that we've heard, that the future is bright with all of you. So thank you for all that you're doing in our community.
And for you seniors, you're going to show up, right? You guys are going to be, okay.
Show up.
You're out there tugging on my heartstrings with the Cyber Patriot and the cyber safety. I'm just, I'm just letting you know that.
Yeah. Those of our future applicants know that that's how you win him.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to go on to our next item, item 10. Council comments. Congratulations to everyone. Council comments, reports, future agenda items. I'll start with my right, Councilmember Nguyen.
I will waive my time.
Spees?
I will waive my time because I'm sure you're going to talk about STA.
I'm not.
Talk about STA.
I'm sure. Vice Mayor Sun?
I just got back from Maui, so I'm, I don't have anything.
Thanks, rub that in.
You were there before me.
Summer vacation. Councilmember Hume?
Well, I didn't, just get back from Maui. I had an RT meeting, but nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. We did have an STA meeting and the Sacramento County Transportation Maintenance Safety and Congestion Relief Act of 2022 was supported by the STA Board. And a memorandum of understanding for those that follow that closely, that probably means a lot more than some of, some of the others, but that was the major walk away from the STA meeting. For other details, feel free to watch what occurred. Next item, I'm not seeing anything else. We will adjourn this meeting at 10:34. Have a great evening, everyone.